Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Uh, 6:30 right now. Uh, we have all councilors here in, oop, yep, watch out for the wall. Um, all, uh, councilors here and accounted for, um...
Can you speak up, please?
I'm, I'm trying to.
Hello, that's how I'm hearing you.
Yep, I'm, I'm trying to, I'll, I'll speak as loud as I, as loud as I can. Um, so, moving on from, from the roll call, the first thing is the open forum, which I'm assuming many of you are here for. Um, the, the format that we like to use for the open forum is to give people an opportunity to, to speak, to, to share their minds with the council during the open forum. We would ask that you would limit your, your, um, your comments to five, five minutes and one appearance. Uh, when you come to, to, to share with the, with the council, please identify yourself so that we, we know who you are. And, um, and we're gonna just kinda let things roll a little bit. Um, I would ask that if you, you know, if you, if you can, to keep your comments concise, uh, 'cause there's a lot of people I've, have a feeling are gonna want to, to share something, and, um, and keep your comments respectful, I mean, we're all still neighbors here, and, um, and I, you know, identify that this is the opportunity to, to share your thoughts. Um, the, later on in the agenda, when, when the subject comes up of what I'm assuming most of you are here for, um, that, at that point, that'll be, uh, opportunity for discussion for the councilors, um, so, uh, feedback from, from the, from the forum is, at that time, not, um, not appropriate. So, so this is, this is the time. So, with that said, um, we'll open up the open forum, and anyone who wishes to come and speak certainly can. So, just come on up and, I, I think you guys, yeah, it's five minutes, I'm gonna time it.
Sit down, wanna be...
Yep, sit down and go for it.
I will time.
Okay, I'm, I'm Maxine Linehan, I'm...
Oh, you have to speak in, you have to speak into the microphone.
Well, I'm a teacher, but, uh, can I, do I have to use this? I don't need it.
Yep, that's the way, that's the way we record it.
You're speaking to the council.
Alright, I won't make eye contact, sorry, guys. I'm Maxine Linehan, I live in Hovland, um, but I consider Grand Marais, uh, my home as well, all of Cook County, actually. I, um, am a master gardener with the Cook County Extension, and I am, um, I've been moved to speak at this time because I think I have some information that people should think about, um, and I'm hoping that they will have some effect as far as maybe tweaking the plan in some way. Uh, I don't know how many of you have planted trees in Cook County, anybody, anybody? Yeah, I have two, quite a few. Many people who do this realize that they are giving a gift to the future, they cannot follow these trees into the future to care for them, they trust others will, at least they hope so. Uh, planting a tree is a special gift to future people who live here, just like the people eighty, a hundred years ago that planted those trees that you see outside. During its lifetime, a tree's roots filter and purify the soil. Their leaves and vascular systems purify, cool, and oxygenate the air around them for other living things. They're even more efficient than air conditioners as far as last concern, and that might come in handy someday. Um, they store carbon, they provide shade, and homes, and shelter, and food for wildlife, like songbirds, squirrels, many butterfly caterpillars, hundreds of insects. Now, insects are in decline all over the world, um, and if, if anybody has been reading about that, and to get rid of one of these huge trees that can produce, uh, an amazing quantity of insects for our songbirds and other wildlife, which are at the base of the food chain, they're a gift, they're an unusual gift, and they can't be replicated. Okay? Um, so, they're at the base of the food chain, they're providing this, in this little ecosystem. Losing a big tree that appears healthy seems like, uh, a really, a waste. Grand Marais' big old trees have been fulfilling these services for eighty to a hundred years, thanks to the people in our past who planted them. These trees are irreplaceable. New sapling trees planted and surrounded by pavement will not achieve the age and size of the ones removed. Anybody that has lived in the city has seen this happen. They may die young in this stark environment where they are put in a, a small area of ground that's surrounded by pavement, their roots cannot get what it needs for nourishment and for oxygen and air. Um, so, many of us have seen this happen in, on city streets where we used to live. The old elms here have outlived so many other elms of Minnesota struck down by Dutch elm disease, and this is remarkable. They are presently doing well, so the soil they are growing in can't be too bad pollution, pollution-wise, otherwise, these would be dead, these trees. They probably had a lot to do with keeping the soil and, uh, and de-polluting it, basically, with their, their root systems. About a year or so ago, Gary Johnson from the University of Minnesota assessed the trees in question and completed a report at the behest of our local extension office. This report was given to city officials. Was this report used during the planning stage of this project? Does anybody know?
I'm, I'm unaware if that specific one was, was used.
Wow, well, okay. There were two people, at least I, I know the names of the people that were given this report. Um, about a, uh, this is a time when other small towns are working to keep their unique historic character and preserving that history to attract visitors. A friend of mine just returned from a long road trip recently to say what a joy it is to see that happening, the visionary communities are leaving natural things in place, adding flowers, places to sit under the trees, encouraging quaint, interesting shops, and places to eat and to lodge, that reflect their unique community rather than look like suburban anywhere USA with lots and lots of pavement all over the place. It really isn't conducive to, uh, a, a quaint atmosphere. Grand Marais has been a unique community, and that's why many of us live here. Do we want it to become like a suburb or any other town where the only way you know where you are is by the nameplate on the edge of town? That's all I have to say, and I sure hope that, uh, somebody can tell me about what happened to that, that, uh, evaluation of the trees by Gary Johnson at, from the university.
Thank you.
You guys can kinda just come up, I mean, I see Jim with his hand up, so...
Can I, can I speak from back here?
Nope.
No, he can't, yeah.
Yep, sorry, it's the, it's the public record thing, it's the only way we can get it on the, on the recording.
For those that you don't know me, I'm Jim Han, and I've been a forester here in Cook County for, uh, thirty-five, forty years, and, uh, I've walked all over the, the backwoods, or most of it anyway, at one time or another. I think, uh, that most of the people here are not here to cancel a project possibly, but they maybe like to see some changes made. That's the impression I got, anyway. Uh, especially for the, the trees. Uh, I've heard it said that there's been no Dutch elm disease in the county, there has, and it's killed every darn one of them that I'm aware of. And I can take you out there if you wanted to see them, what's left of their skeletons. But, uh, they haven't bothered the trees in town, and there's some reason for that, which no one with any knowledge can explain. You know, it could be the lake, cold temperatures, humidity, could be a lot of things, but I think they're a pretty rare commodity because they haven't been affected at all, to speak of. Um, the, uh, I think, I think that some of the people here would like to see maybe some changes made in, in the project, not cancel the project, sewer lines are important, water lines are important, you know, for the future of the community, but maybe the, the bike path could be, uh, eliminated, you know, the, the new one. Is it needed, you know, and will the future require something like that? I don't know, I don't know if anybody knows. But, the, uh, why not just build a sidewalk coming down for people to, uh, oh, get access to the North House and so forth, down Highway sixty-one? And this is a major highway to, well, between the United States and Canada, actually, and I think we, we would be better to expedite the traffic through it rather than slow it down or stop it. Uh, you know, I think it's, uh, necessary, I don't think it's necessary to remove the trees or to, uh, or, or to remove the contaminated soil, 'cause it's not doing any damage. Uh, the soil, the contamination is not going into the lake, all of our water systems here are, are piped, so, you know, we're not getting that into the, into a well or something like that. And, uh, so I'm wondering if it's even necessary to, to remove the contaminated soil or to have the bike path, you know, the way, you know, the way it's been suggested, anyway. Uh, I think that, uh, it's important that we do put in the sewer line, the water lines, and I think it's important that we maybe try to alleviate, I don't know if it can be done, the water problem down here in front of City Hall, when you get a big storm. Now, maybe that's part of the project, I, I don't know what they're planning on that, I've got to admit that, but it would be nice to alleviate that, you know, to get rid of this, the stormwater in that manner. I think that, uh, uh, you know, that, well, I saw it, a memo sent out, and it mentioned the traditional and cultural aspects of the community. Well, I think we've got that now, except maybe for one thing in town, I'm not gonna mention that, but, uh, I think it's important that we retain that. I lived here a long time, and I, I think that, uh, it's important that we do retain, you know, the, the community the way it is, and I, I'm not saying it could never be changed, but I think it's important that we, we maintain its, its status and its, its quality. Uh, we know the trees are in good condition or, or fair, and there's, you know, they're gonna stay here a long time if we leave them alone, but, uh, I think that, uh, if we can, you know, leave them and change the construction aspects to some extent so that they won't be damaged, I think it'd be important to the community.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Boyd, I'm the executive director of the Cook County Chamber, and I'm speaking for myself tonight. I strongly support the Highway sixty-one project and hope it does not get delayed or harmed in any way by this dispute over eleven trees. We've been working on this for more than three years, and there have been many meetings at which the people of Grand Marais and Cook County were encouraged to offer their opinions. I myself brought an expert on walkable communities from Minneapolis, and he held two workshops that attracted about a hundred participants. They expressed a desire that Highway sixty-one be made less of a barrier cutting through the middle of town, that the traffic lanes be narrowed to slow speeds, that bumpouts be installed so that pedestrians were more visible, that public art and benches and other amenities be added to encourage walking and biking and simply being outdoors. All of those elements were included in the design that CJ Fernandez created for us, every single one of them. Through the first year, we were knocking our heads against a wall. The MINDOT engineer was saying no to everything we were requesting, but then Duane Held, the district engineer for MINDOT, did something what I think is courageous, he brought in a new engineer and brought back CJ Fernandez, and from that time forward, MINDOT, though once and always a large bureaucracy that behaves like a bureaucracy, has sought to accommodate our desires and our needs. Broadway intersection, for example, the reconstruction of that, which is fairly complicated, was moved to the first year, so that that intersection will be open when the rest of, or when Highway sixty-one is closed from Broad, Broadway to, uh, to Wiscon, Wisconsin, um, so that, uh, Sportos and, uh, and Holiday and, and Hungry Hippie have at least some access. Buck's Hardware, a little bit of First Avenue West, uh, is going to be, uh, torn up, and Buck asked that it not happen when sixty-one is closed, because that would pretty much leave him without any access. So, they moved that to a time they will not do that while sixty-one is closed itself. Um, they worked very hard to preserve Sportos parking, they, they made all kinds of accommodations to us when we asked them things. For a while, the, the principal landscape architect for MINDOT, a man named David Larson, was heavily involved. I found him really trustworthy, partly because he was taking our side against his own engineer when that was important. I remember when the issue of removing the trees came up. David said the trees were not healthy, were planted in poor soil that prevented them from thriving, and that many were very likely...
Please be respect, please, please be respectful.
I didn't laugh when you were, when you were speaking.
Jim? It's okay, Jim, it's okay.
Yeah, Jim, just stay here.
It's just, everybody needs to be respectful, whether our opinions are the same or different, please.
He said that they were not healthy, that they were planted in poor soil, that they were very likely taking, some of them taking up contaminants from the petroleum plume beneath them, and that they would be further injured by this construction project and unlikely to survive. And he pledged that the new trees and bushes and other landscape plantings MINDOT installed as part of this project would be planted in new soil designed specifically to ensure that they were able to thrive and remain healthy for many years. I accepted his professional judgment, I'm not a landscape architect. His judgment was solidly in line with that of the arborist MINDOT brought in to evaluate the trees. In my view, MINDOT and the city of Grand Marais both have acted in good faith on this complicated project over a very long period of time. Not doing anything is not an option. The pavement is worn out and needs replacement, and that creates a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to replace worn utilities, and in my view, dig out contaminated soil, to create a badly needed multiple-use pathway through town, and to update such equipment as the traffic signals at their Broadway intersection. The consent agreement has been signed, the contracts have been let, I know there is distress about the cost of Grand Marais, which is significant higher, significantly higher than originally estimated. I hope, however, the city leaders will be able to get past the angst of that and move to embrace the many improvements this project will bring to the community. Thanks.
Thank you. And you wanna go next?
I think he was just moving.
Oh, you were just moving, oh, I thought you were standing up to come up. Well, I mean, whoever wants to go next, it's open chair.
I am Pat Lynn Zankman. I am a second or third generation from Grand Marais. Um, I was also director of the Cook County Historical Society when I returned home. This community, um, it's what brought all the rest of you here. We have a historic, history in this county that is deeper than supposedly the oldest county, or oldest town because of Grand Portage, but Grand Marais also has a tremendously old history. This is what brings tourists. And the trees that are planted were planted by our ancestors when they moved Highway sixty-one, which of course it wasn't called that then, from County Road Seven. You want a good bike rail, trail, try County Road Seven, it's a good, long workout. The trees, et cetera, are part of the ambiance of this village that makes it look like different than most other places in Minnesota and in the country. Don't go backwards and make us look like everybody else, I'm sorry. Those trees are good, they should stand, they should stand, they, they're not gonna, in your lifetime, they are not going to be, the trees you wanna plant are not gonna be as gracious as they are. So, I'm hoping that whatever you do, somehow or another, you keep Grand Marais looking like the small, comfortable, pleasant community that it is, including as many of the trees as you can save. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Joe Pollak, uh, moved here from Wisconsin in nineteen eighty-two, and, uh, as a hobbyist, I've studied trees, um, all my life, plants, anything that grows in the soil, and, uh, and so I was, uh, when I, when I moved here, and I, and I saw that our streets were lined with elms, I, I thought it was a miracle, you know? And, uh, to me, they're, uh, the, they're a jewel, and they're a jewel of this town, the point is a jewel, you know? It, it, it brings charm. Those trees, to me, are like, they're the welcome wagon for people who come here, and they're, to me, they're irreplaceable, I, I know that personally, I would have a hard time, every time I drove down the hill and saw the, and saw those trees gone, it would be very difficult for me. And I, I realized that, uh, all the, all the large trees in town, not just those, all the different species, if the same assessment were done of their health by the same people, they would probably come to the same conclusion about a lot of those, that they're well, you know, they're not doing the best. They'll probably outlive all of us, and I, I think that whether they're doing the best or not is not the question. The question is, what is the ju, what are the jewels of this town, what do we, what do we, what do we preserve to make this, you know, a welcoming place for the people who come here? To make it, to retain its charm? I sincerely believe that, that those trees and the point have a lot to do with why this place was voted the, the best small town in America, or whatever that moniker is. Um, to have that name and then have it look like a suburb, and I don't know what kind of trees are, you know, are planned to be planted there, probably not gonna be elms, and, um, those elms, they're, they're original to this area, you know, they, they, I mean, they're native to this, to this area, and it would be very difficult for me to see, um, some hybrid planted there, I, I have no idea what they're planning to plant there. They wouldn't, uh, provide the shade, they just wouldn't provide the beauty. Right now, those trees are in all their glory, and every time I see them right now, I wonder if it's the last time, and, uh, personally, I hope it's not, and I would like to be able to, when I'm, when my son can talk, I would like to be able to talk, tell him about those trees, and not have to find some other jewel of a town somewhere that still has streets lined with elms. Uh, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
I'll be brief, concise, is this right, Mike?
It'll work.
It'll work. Greg Mueller from Lutzen, uh, first I want to, um, I went to the Rural Arts Summit in Grand Rapids, twenty, twenty, represent artists and art advocates from over twenty-six states attended, and, uh, a lot of panelists, a lot of discussion, and when Mayor Jay, who went, I appreciate that, spoke, I noticed, most people put down their cellphones, and most people took, put down their programs, and were really in tune with what Jay had and what Cook County was doing for the arts and the advocates, so I appreciate the mayor. Attending the Rural Arts Conference, Quick and Concise, number two, I love trees too, but I've listened to the WOTIP article twice about the, uh, pollution mitigation that has to occur under there, that some of those trees unfortunately have to go, if you listen to that, uh, interview with the Pollution Control Agency, there's, there's valid reasons behind it. And the final thing is I applaud the council for working with CJ Fernandez, who you mentioned. Um, I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of landscape architects and architects through public art, and CJ Fernandez is by far the tops when it comes to care and craft of a well-designed, um, civic arena, and, and, and studying both the history and contemporary movements in it, so I appreciate what you're doing, thanks.
Thank you, Greg.
I've probably come to the conclusion that this is a lost cause from what I've seen over the last three to four years, but, uh, I, 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 I wrote a piece in the paper, some of you may have read it, I hope you have.
Jim, yeah, Jim, we, just for public record.
My name is James Ramel, I've lived here for thirty-some years, I'm getting old, I don't remember how long, and I've been involved in trying to protect the aesthetics of the forest and the character of this town. Ever since I moved here, I was on the first land use plan, where we managed to get, most towers are not three-hundred feet lit, you'll notice, things like that, trying to get the Forest Service and the DNR to do different types of cutting where it isn't just clear cut and all even-aged aspen, I've been working on many, many things, and one was the library elm, which some of you who have lived here a long time might remember, which was a magnificent, magnificent tree, like the cobblestone elm and the other one in front of the library right now, and, and we tried to save that tree, and it was cut down even though it was admitted that there was no Dutch elm disease in it, and I, anybody who read my commentary knows how I felt about that. A couple of things I, I would like to correct, first of all, it was just stated that MINDOT says that, uh, an individual today said that MINDOT said these trees were all unhealthy, they couldn't thrive in the soil they're in. Um, has anybody looked at those trees? Um, a few of them do, there are a number of them that do go, they're from three different age classes, and a number of them do go back to the founding of this town just about, maybe not quite there, but somewhere around the turn of the century, give or take a few years. They seem to be thriving quite well. I would like to ask Jim if you don't mind, um, you've looked at all the trees, and what did you feel about the general health of these trees?
Well, they're all good, good or better.
And Jim is a retired forester from Grand Marais, who has worked...
He addressed us.
What?
He addressed us, he, he did say that.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask him, if that's okay. Um, I also know that you received a letter today from another retired forester, longtime resident up here, Orvis Lonkey, is that correct?
Yeah.
Did he give you an evaluation of all the trees?
That, yep, he did.
Okay.
He gave us his.
And his, his evaluation also contradicts MINDOT's. Now, it's been stated that those of us who felt, who always felt that this plan should have taken those trees into account, should have been more involved in the process. I would like, it's, I, I know for a fact that when the first visiting, visiting meetings happened, the trees were brought up as a concern. Other people did over time, too, and a year and a half ago, before any of this was finalized, I and other people were at a hearing, that none of this was finalized, and we brought up all these concerns. We practically begged, we tried to say, please, please show us an alternative for that couple block stretch that could be done to save those trees, and then, do what you want, but try to show us an alternative. We were completely ignored. I talked to the, the people from MINDOT, the engineers, their landscape architect, they said they were gonna get back to me, they never did, I tried to reach them, they wouldn't respond. Now, we're getting responses from them in written questions on certain things, which I would like to add into the record, but I don't have it here right now. It's a two-block stretch, it, it, from the beginning of this process, it's always gone that the trees are going, this is what we're going to do, that's the way it has gone. There was never an alternative offered to the public that showed that there, you know, there was nothing shown that could have saved the trees, it was just, this is it. It was just, this is it. And that's how it's gone. A year and a half ago, that was it. It was just, this is the way it's going to be. This is what we want. This is what everybody wants. I spent Fisherman's Picnic Weekend walking around this town. I talked to so many people that are longtime residents from this area, people that were, older people that were back, who grew up here, who had no idea that they were cutting all these trees down. I talked to a business owner today on my way down the trail at Trail Center, had no idea they were cutting the trees down. It just, I don't know. I don't think you really took the time to look at any creative ideas. The other thing is, you did receive, I never made public who the person was that did that evaluation a year and a half ago when we asked for another evaluation. Because the person, for his own reasons, because he was a state employee, he didn't want to get in trouble with MnDOT, basically. But he, in his evaluation, which pretty much contradicted MnDOT, and pretty much is in line with two local foresters, Jim Hain and Orvis Lundke, and you have his evaluation, he contradicted MnDOT. I know, Mr. Mayor, you received it. I saw the email chain. You received that evaluation, where he specifically said you should have another person do an official evaluation. It was never made public, it was, there was no, who on the council did you share that with? Who on the design committee did you share that with? And I just feel that was before any of this was finalized. When we were trying to just ask that you look at some other alternative before you came to a final decision. And now, it's just kind of got pushed through, and in a couple weeks, they're going to start cutting. The other problem is, nobody's ever said, MnDOT says other tree clearing. I've just heard that people think it's just these elms. No. Between North House Folk School and Rec Park Road, that area of trees, red pines and birch and other things that kind of give a vegetative shield to the Rec Park, that's getting cut down in a few weeks as well. And they're putting up a wall and a 12-foot bike path through there. People don't know these things. None of this stuff was ever made clear to people. You say everybody is in favor of this, that they've all known all of this, that, you know, we have to move forward because this has been debated and debated and debated. But yet, whenever we would bring something up, it was disregarded. And, I mean, these things have, it's disingenuous to say that these things haven't been brought up. You've never made really clear what is all getting cut down. All that was said, kind of in a strange way, was other tree clearing besides downtown. All I'm asking for right now, and I know you've already cut a $2 million-plus-dollar check and they haven't lifted a shovel yet, all I'm asking for is that, I don't think you understand what a lot of people in this county feel. I couldn't find one tourist who thought it was a good idea to cut those trees down. They were flabbergasted by it. And I spent tons of time just going and talking with people, and you know that, Mr. Mayor, because you approached me while I was trying to talk to somebody one day. Nobody agreed with it. They all thought it was ludicrous. It just seems, this design, what did Mr. Boyd say today in the letter to all the business owners? This is a design that keeps us from looking like anywhere else, uniquely created to reflect the local culture of traditional contemporary Scandinavian fusion. What is that? No, I'm just, I'm just, but he's telling business owners they were supposed to come here and shut us down because we're kind of a, I don't know, a mob or something? He didn't use the word mob, I don't know. But anyway.
Let's just address the council and address it in a way away from...
All I'm asking is that, why can't this, why does this have to be done in a couple weeks? If the work downtown is not being done until the summer of 2021? Why? Can anybody tell me why it has to be done right now if the work is not going to be done until the summer of 2021? What is the reasoning for cutting them down now, in a couple weeks? I'm just asking, could somebody please tell me why?
Long-eared bats, I think.
No, please, long-eared bats.
Okay, let's, okay, so...
I would like to address the long-eared bat thing, because there's a lot of misinformation.
You're already way over your time.
But there's a lot of misinformation going on. Long-eared bats, yes, you want to cut certain trees at certain times of the year to protect nesting trees. But that has nothing to do whether you cut them this November or next November. I just would like to clear that up. There's misinformation going on. Would somebody please tell me why we can't wait a year?
I would encourage you to contact the MnDOT guys. I mean, you're in contact with them already.
So you have no say now?
There's, I mean, I can't answer that question without asking them.
But you're the guys who told MnDOT to cut them down. Why can't you ask them to just hold off a year if they're not even working on that stretcher road for a year?
I don't know the reason.
So basically, you're going to cut everything down through Grammeray and up the highway along the Rec Park, and it's all going to be cut down all next summer, and the work's not being done there till the summer after? All I'm asking is...
Jim, I want to be fair, but we're at 12 minutes. If there's other people that want to address, and we have time set aside...
Okay, my request is that...
To continue and have this discussion.
My request is that you delay the cutting for a year, since the work isn't being done there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Norman. It seems like the trees have been covered pretty well here, but I just, you know, have not been certainly on top of the contract here, the budget here, but when I saw that it had suddenly gone up by 300%, I'm surprised that the money was paid, to be quite honest. If the MnDOT engineer came up with a $750,000 estimate and it suddenly went up to 2.3, I think there's a problem. And I'm surprised that it's not being addressed. So, that's all I have to say.
I will tell you, Chris, it was talked about at the last meeting. Just so people know, it's not that we have not addressed it, it was talked about, it's on film. We have lots of questions that we're looking into, so I'll let people go online and see, but we have addressed it.
Has the money been paid?
No.
Yes.
It has?
It's in the checks.
And cut.
It's in the checks.
That was a yes.
Okay. Well, that was my bad.
Real quick, on that line, Ben Peters, on that line of the $2.3 million check, was it ever an option to bond?
Sorry, who are you?
Ben Peters, Grammeray. On that note, the $2.3 million that we paid cash for, I know that we had, it was initially $800,000 or $1 million or whatever it was, and you've been saving for that, but the $2.3 million, and you took a large chunk out of the general fund and then the reserve fund and then a lot of it out of PUC. I don't remember that being talked about, the PUC meeting last week? Was that approved to be, can you just take money from PUC? But then, was it ever an option to bond on a project of that size? I mean, what's our financial health look like after dropping $2.5 million on a project in cash? You know, like, we have other projects, some of them being discussed today. Well, what kind of bonding power do we have now if we're cash poor? You know, so, those are some of my concerns. I mean, are we healthy and ready for emergencies? You know, so, anyway.
Thanks, Ben.
Hi. Hi, I'm Jan Seeritson. And I'm certainly not a person who's in favor of cutting trees, ever. I've planted thousands of trees in my life, but if the trees need to be cut for the greater good of this project, I understand it needs to be done. I'm not happy about it, for sure. I don't think any of you are. But I did want to speak to the integrity and the hard work of this group in particular for years on this project and getting to this point. You've conducted many amazing meetings, maybe not as controversial as this one, but the controversy usually doesn't get real heated until the end. But you've done an amazing job of hosting many, many public meetings over many, many years, and engaged all of the community, and the aesthetics have been deeply considered by many people who have attended many meetings, including Jim Boyd, who I would say, I wouldn't gauge how many meetings, but you've attended many, many, many meetings, many hours. So, for people in this room to disrespect that, I get a little upset. A lot of people have spent many, many hours in the last several years working to create the best project that we could get, to make it pedestrian-friendly and safe, and so that we would look not like every other town. And to create our uniqueness with our history in mind. And we've worked really, really hard. And there are many ideas that you probably haven't even heard of yet that I'm pretty excited about. So, I just resent the tone of a lot of this group, that MnDOT is just forcing us to create this project. It's not the case. We've, the citizens, many citizens, have been greatly involved in this project since day one, and they've worked really hard to get it in the image of Grammeray and for the greatest good of the future. And I'm sad that a few trees may need to go, and I'm a grown-up. I understand some things need to be sacrificed in order to move ahead with doing the infrastructure that needs to be done and so forth. So, I'm a grown-up. I know that those kinds of things sometimes need to happen. Not happy about it. But I also just want to applaud you all for all the work you've done, and I've seen you do some really, really hard work on this project, and I really don't want to hear bad things said about you while I'm in the room. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mary Hain, I'm a part-time citizen, here half the year and here half not. I attended that DOT meeting in August, and it was told to me, when I asked the question, that if the bike path did not have to be built, the trees did not have to come down. I directly asked him that, so it can be changed. Someone else also asked him, can you deviate or change the bike path pan somewhat, instead of coming right through where the trees are? And that, he also said that was, could happen, too. So I think there still are things that can be done to, well, for one thing, I don't think we need the bike path. It's kind of silly, in my opinion, we already have one, doesn't get used enough anyway. Why build another one? There's no reason for that. And my opinion, obviously, I'm for the trees. And as far as that report that that young lady was talking about, I read that report too, and it was given to you, Mr. Mayor, and why that wasn't disclosed, you didn't have to show the names or anything like that. We know when it was given to you and everything. I feel bad that the other citizens that have questioned you on that, they haven't seen that report. I think that's something that's real important, because it shows that the health of the trees are really, they're pretty good. There was one maybe that was in a fair condition, but the rest are in good shape. And addressing this other young lady over here, I don't think any disrespect really is happening, it's just that people are concerned, they want the trees to stay, which in my opinion, it's kind of a no-brainer. I would think maybe all of you could maybe, you know, I shouldn't say the word "respect the citizens" and what we think, but it's important. It's important to a lot of people. And I've done the same thing, similar to Mr. Rammel, I've gone around a lot and asked people about this, do you know about this project? Do you know what's going on? Did you know the trees are getting cut down? Do you know the timeframe on all this? I'm going to say, I don't know, probably I've asked, I don't know, 500, 600 people, and I would say, 3/4 of them have no clue what's going on. And I know there's been a lot of meetings, I know there's been a lot of things going on regarding that, but I think more public input could have been, you know, I'm just saying, posters. A lot of people don't have internet, a lot of people don't follow social media, you know, I know there's little blurbs in the newspaper on occasion, but I really realize that there's a lot of people that have no idea what is going on with this project. I'm for the trees, I hope that something can come up just to help all the citizens in this whole entire county, just keep, we can deviate. That gentleman from the DOT said that, the engineer said that you can, things can be changed. He told us that. Then everything, you know, then everything I think would be much better in the community and everybody would be a lot happier. And I hope that report gets disclosed to the city. Don't want to reveal the names, but that report should be disclosed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie LaMuska, and I've been a resident here for 32 years. I too am for the trees. We have discussed that a lot. I've also wanted to talk a little bit about the money. I appreciate the conversation, the little bit of conversation about the cost. We've seen a lot of changes in our community, we've seen increased taxes. As a previous homeowner in this community, I've hired contractors for remodeling, for building homes. There's always cost overruns. I do not understand what kind of contract you would have with the state that would allow such a large increase, and I don't understand why that would be agreed to without the citizenship knowing about it. It will affect everyone in the county, I believe, and I'm starting to see more and more, it appears, it appears, to be lack of transparency. I would like to see more transparency. I do come to a number of meetings, and I would just like to say that I appreciate the changes that have been made already by the state when it comes to the businesses and everything. However, that wouldn't, those change orders wouldn't have had to have taken place if there had been a business assessment impact done. So, it seems like from the beginning that we weren't always looking out for the city of Grammeray. We were trying to make this process move forward as rapidly as we could, and there's a lot of things that people were not aware of. So I'd just like to have that noted, that we'd like to have more transparency for the community.
I want to just address that a little bit, Deb, and I know we're not supposed to, but as far as the transparency, again, I'm going to recite, to go back to our meeting from the end of September, we talked at great length. I don't often buy the paper, but I did look at it. It was given a little bit of a mim, not much. There is great discussion by all of us as to what we can do in directing our staff to go back to find out. So, I can't sum it all up here for you, but there was great discussion. There isn't a one of the five of us that's happy about it, but I would say to go back and view the videotape, and you'll get the whole picture of our feelings and what we want.
Thank you. Because I, with the number of retirees in this community and the love that many of them feel, if there had been bonds issued, I think you would have gotten a lot of support to help cover that extra expense, just because of the way people... a lot of support to help cover that extra expense, just because of the way people feel so strongly about living in this community. So there were other options. So, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Larry Botor, and I lived in Europe for eight years. Has anyone lived in Europe? In Europe, beauty is sacred. Nature is sacred. So you don't do things like cut trees like this. You don't just, you don't just do a bureaucratic move and say, "Oof," you know. And I tried to defend the trees at the library. And I got the, "Oh, you silly child, you just don't understand grown-ups" treatment, you know. So I just hope something can be done to save the trees because, I mean, it's an obviously beautiful thing of nature. And, I mean, I can, I can say some more about those trees that probably no one has said before. Those are elms, and they're not native here. And the people that planted them planted them because they were sort of from a Victorian mindset. And they came from, let's say, towns that were, they had these kind of trees, these elms, that were like fountains, you know, ceilings, vaulted ceilings above their streets. And I think that was their intention, to have that kind of aesthetic. So, again, in Europe, you wouldn't have this debate at all. I mean, it's obviously beautiful. Obviously, we're going to save it. We're not going to, you know, just laugh it off and go with some expediency. So if it can be saved, if they can be saved, I think that would be a PR bonanza for this town, like the intrepid citizens came to the meeting and they fought the evil bureaucrats and won. And, oh, boy, flocking to hug the trees, you know. Oh, well. Maybe I'm just a silly child. I don't know.
Anyone else?
I'll just make this quick. I usually don't vocalize my opinion, but it's not just the trees, it's with...
Who are you?
Alexa, Alexa Douglas.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, the trees provide habitat for animals and birds. It's a part of the whole ecological system. And I think it's imperative that we maintain a natural habitat, especially in town, for people to enjoy and for our animals and our birds. The ecosystem is being horribly abused around the world. So whatever we can do to save a tree, I think that would be good for humanity in general.
Aloha, my name is Clay Neal. You can call me Afah.
I knew you'd do that.
Previous former renter at 401 South, Second Avenue East, resident of 30 whole days, 33 years old, wife of 36, grandparents in Aurora, father in Aurora, mother in grand portage, and babies on the way. No better place I'd rather be than to raise my kids next to their grandparents and great-grandparents while they're still alive. What a tragedy. When young families come, and young families go. Because we forget our identity as a city and as a people. A long time ago, we used to be fur people here. Fifty and 100 years later, times change. Then we shift and become water people, start the fishing. That's our identity. Fifty, 100 years later, times change. Then we become loggers, people of wood. Fifty, 100 years later, times change. Now our confused identity is placed on a post of tourism. And guess what's going to happen 50 to 100 years from now? I grew up in Hawaii, in the old ways, very similar to the indigenous Native Americans, where we were stewards of 100,000 acres for 100,000 years, and there was only one government system. We did the best choice for seven generations deep, not one. How selfish it is for us to be disputing about trees and a highway when our own kids cannot live here, and our grandkids cannot live here. And in 30 years from now, who will still be alive here? What generation will take your place when at midnight, my wife... My wife wakes me up for heavy bleeding, and I go to the ER room, and I ask for an ultrasound to see if my twins have been miscaraged. There's no ultrasound. But Wednesdays and Fridays, I am a productive member of this society and community, and my generation wants to come in. Two days later, we got an ultrasound that the twins are okay. Sadly, we had some water damage underneath our home, like many homes here, and we couldn't find a contractor to remedy it. Because we have an out-of-state landlord, what makes it more tricky? Our residential areas are no longer residential. We have Airbnbs. We have other out-of-state things going on. And our generations are feeling it. So now I'm a resident of the RV Park Number 26, and on the 20th, the water will shut off. I have to put in my notice to Hedstrom. On the 18th, it'll be my last day. I already put in my notice at the Co-op as a cashier in a deli on Saturday, Sunday. I work seven days a week, try and provide for my family and live here. The highway will eventually come because times change. And after we are confused about the tourism state that we think we are, the elders will pass, and there's no babies being born in hospitals. What will happen to a town in 50 years? There are priorities. And I wish I could say the trees are the number-one priority. I ask the council to place their vision upon seven generations deep, however that is. And to the people of Grand Marais, it's been a pleasure being here, and our family must move south, regrettably. Please, people of Grand Marais, if all of you came together, just as passionate as you are about these trees being here and the hopes of the future generations taking care of these trees, then work together with the councils to figure out affordable housing, finances, job occupations that's higher than 13 bucks an hour, where immigrants are no longer needed here, but we can fund our own. And be aware that in 50 to 100 years, this town will not be a tourism town anymore. It will be something different. Change has to happen. It will always change. And with that, I thank you for your support and that.
Anybody else? Going twice?
After hearing that man speak, I feel like what I'm saying is kind of irrelevant. My name is Ray Melsa, and I live in Hovland. I spent most of my working life in industrial forestry. And when I moved back to the Midwest, I was involved in community tree planting projects to kind of regain some good karma. And also, I'm not from here. I grew up in Minneapolis, and I had the trauma of seeing all my childhood trees removed because they were dying or dead of Dutch elm. And so when I heard about these trees, I just thought, who in their right mind would cut down an elm that did have Dutch elm? I mean, it's just a miracle that they're even here and so healthy. And as far as, I mean, I feel like I'm an adult. I'm all grown up. And as far as art goes, I've heard the word "art" bandied about here by several people, and benches. And I'm thinking benches in the sun. And I'm thinking art. You can sell all the fancy art you want, but there's nothing more artistic than those trees. There's nothing more beautiful. And that's all I'm going to say.
Anyone else? We'll take a few more, and then we eventually have to get going with the business.
I'm Julie Biddinger. Thanks for letting us be here and talking. I appreciate it. And I too feel kind of strange talking after such an eloquent talk about things that are very important for the life of this town. But I did have a question. Is it just a matter of maybe not having a bike path, and the trees could be saved? Is it that simple? Do you know the answer to that?
There's a lot of layers to this project. So if you would like, I would encourage you to come in, and anybody to come in and take a look at the plans that, as they've been proposed, and then we'd have an opportunity to explain some of the elements of it to you. There's a lot of things going on.
So it's, I know it's a complicated issue, but, boy, it sounds like if there's just a little tweaking and you could find a middle ground and take away, like, a bike path and keep the trees, like somebody said, it'd be a great PR. Just find that middle way and try to keep as many people happy as possible. But again, thank you. Thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Close any comments? Okay. Well, thank you all for sharing your thoughts. I've taken a bunch of notes, so I'll be working to follow up on that. All right, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda has the typical three items on it. It's the approval of this agenda, approval of meeting minutes, and the payment of bills. So if anyone has anything they'd like to add to the agenda or anything they'd like to pull for discussion, we can do that now. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will make the motion.
I have one question.
Yep.
On the approved, improvement of payment of bills.
Just a second, Craig. I'm sorry, guys, we...
If you have conversations, we can take it outside.
We can't hear each other.
So that we can keep working through our business.
We're just wondering if you're actually going to discuss among yourselves what was all discussed here today.
We have it on the agenda.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Craig, what's your question?
Well, the improvement of payment of bills that we sent to the DOT, I did get clarification that that does not include the TAP dollars, correct?
The TAP dollars...
The TAP dollars are not part of this.
Are included.
They are included, okay. And then, there was some discussion at last week's meeting about possibly some portions of the project we may delete because of cost. Is that coming later, or what was the plan on that?
I'll give you an update on this at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so we pay in full, and then we do change orders to change things?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's the motion for consent agenda. Is there a second?
No second, yep.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Carries. Okay, so the first item on our, on our agenda, I appreciate everyone who's on the agenda being very patient as we go through very necessary open forum, is Dark Sky Festival. So we've got some, some folks from Visoka County. So you guys can tell us who you are and what you're up against here, and then we'll see what we can do.
Hello, Linda Jerk, Executive Director of Visoka County.
Lily Nelson Peterson, the Adventure Resource Coordinator at Visoka County.
Little history, last year, we hosted our first-ever Dark Sky Festival. It was crazy, exciting, and well-attended. It occurred the first full weekend, December 11th of last year.
13th and 14th.
13th and 14th, pretty close. Lily's got the stats. And we are moving forward with planning our next festival. And Lily reminded me that this was my idea, which I thought it was Brian Hansel's, so I guess I'll take it on. We are approaching the council tonight to do a lights-out portion in our downtown area, and I'll let Lily expand on that.
So, you know, as we all know and appreciate, we have a really dark sky here in Cook County and in Grand Marais. The Gunflint Trail is actually home to the darkest sky east of the Mississippi, which is pretty cool. And we started hosting this festival, like Linda said, last year to kind of celebrate that fact and bring awareness of that great natural resource to our visitors. We had a phenomenal turnout for Dark Sky Festival last year, and we're hoping to do the same thing this year. We'd like to, we've already talked to the workers at the city to ask if it's possible to do this, but we're asking for your permission to turn off the lights for about 15 minutes downtown. Not the emergency lights, but the non-emergency lights to kind of create an even darker atmosphere so that the attendance as a kickoff for the festival can really downtown see and appreciate that truly dark sky that we have. So we're just asking for permission.
Great. And so you've talked to Mike and to Public Utilities about the feasibility of this and the location, locations for the lights, and you don't see...
I don't know what you mean by emergency and non-emergency.
Well, like, the Highway 61 lights.
You mean like the signal?
Like, they said that we couldn't turn those off.
And streetlights, correct?
Yeah.
The poles that you see on the streets outside, that were all installed in 2004, those are connected to two different control boxes, so we only have to go to two places to turn them all off. So, yeah, we can do that. The, a lot of the other lights in town, there's no way to individually control them, so it would be mostly impossible to do that. But downtown, we can.
How long of a time are you thinking about, and what does the Downtown Business District Group think?
So we haven't approached them yet because we felt like the first hurdle was asking the city and then to take, because if we couldn't get permission from you guys, it felt like we'd be opening ourselves up to discussion with a lot of people for no purpose. So we thought the first step was to ask you to gain permission and then to move forward with the individual businesses.
Many of our downtown businesses, because this is, of course, at night, when you think of the downtown Wisconsin corridor and First and Broadway, are not open. They're retail. And like, when you think of one or two dining establishments, they close by that time. So we would be talking to the Gunflint Tavern. It's usually a darker, you know, maybe just pull your shades down. We don't want people to, you know, fork their neighbor or anything. So it would be really up to them. We wouldn't be saying in a forceful way, "You have to shut off your lights." But they could also make it pretty cool to be a part of the festival. And the time we've talked about, you know, I said, "If we get five minutes, it would be great," just to see the harbor, because we never see the harbor dark without the streetlights of Wisconsin on it. I've been here 59 years, and I don't think I've seen that. So that's what we're looking for. So that's what we're looking for. And like Lily said, we don't want to approach businesses until we, this was the first step in the process.
I guess I'm, I don't know, I'm the one speaking. I guess I'm interested in what the, what the businesses would have to say and think. I'm also wondering, you know, obviously downtown is convenient, but we have a golf course, which is very large, not used at that time of year, that obviously, we're not inconveniencing businesses, turning off lights for the safety of commuters, pedestrians. We've got the old airport runway, that's another option. So I'm just wondering why the downtown area, it seems to me like we have other really close-by convenient spots.
I think, I think that the point, though, is, is that there, there are obviously a lot of places where people can go to appreciate the dark sky. I think the bigger impact is the statement of our downtown collectively getting together, and saying, "We're gonna turn off the lights and appreciate this resource," in a place where there is usually a lot of lights on, even at night. And so it's just, it's about just having that minute of saying, like, "Yeah, let's appreciate," like Linda said, "the dark harbor."
You know, as a downtown business owner, right, you know, I don't think that the issue is all that significant. I mean, there are a few businesses that are open, and I think, you know, if they're willing to go to those businesses, talk to those businesses, and they may want to join, or they may not want to do something, but, you know, turning off the streetlights certainly have an impact, creating that impression of a dark sky that, you know, I think we've talked about many times. I think this would be a unique opportunity for us to create an experience that people are here in the downtown area would be able to benefit from. If it doesn't work, hey.
And it wouldn't be a hard thing to make, to make the approval contingent on the fact that they speak to the, to the, to the business owners, and make sure that they get, you know, that the, that the business owners are at least, they know what's going on, you know?
Well, and it's potential overtime to our staff, then, right? Because we're talking about a Friday night.
And, yeah. So, any other questions for these, these folks, or any other statements? Otherwise, we could-
Well, if you're looking, looking for a motion, I would make a motion that we approve the request to allow the lights to be turned off after eight o'clock, and do we need to put a, for a maximum period of time, no longer than nine o'clock? I mean-
Oh, yeah, like fifteen minutes.
Yeah. I'm willing to say, give you a little bit of time, but you only need 15 minutes, fine.
Okay.
For no longer than an hour, and provided that you talk to the downtown businesses that are open and have, you know-
Could be affected.
Yeah, might be affected, so.
Okay, so that's a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any final discussion?
Are we looking at an hour, or are we looking at 15 minutes? Because we haven't talked to businesses yet.
Right.
Well, I said, my motion was just to allow up to an hour, and if businesses say-
Do we know what part of town is gonna be dark? That does not affect the highway corridor because of the streetlights on the highway?
The only ones it affects are the lights that look like the ones right outside here.
So that's Broadway-
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin, First, Second, over by the Dairy Queen.
Anything else? Any other discussion? I think it might not be a bad idea to talk to the sheriff's office, and make sure that we've got somebody around, just in case. I mean, I don't know why, I mean, we're probably going way overboard with this, but, but it seems like it's dark. Never done this before. Think of the, think of the ideas, options. Anything else?
I would like, I'd be curious as to what the businesses say first, I guess, before we decided upon it, but-
Can you, between now and then, if it gets passed through, can you guys give us feedback on what you're, what you're hearing?
We certainly will.
I'm assuming they would, if they didn't want to do it, and it was gonna happen, but it would be nice if you guys could maybe come back and-
And I can certainly attest to the fact that Visoka County, or the team at Visoka County, is not in favor of upsetting any of our downtown business partners. So if there is a lot of pushback, it wouldn't be worth us pursuing the lights-out effort.
Gotcha. Okay, well, the, well, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
opposed?
Nay.
All right, carries. So we'll be looking for that, for that feedback.
Of course. We'll get it to you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving right along. Next thing on the agenda is we have some folks from McCombe and LHB, I think maybe just LHB, right?
Jim's here, too.
Oh, Jim's here. Okay, good. There he is. All right, so we're gonna get a report on some of the, some of the brainstorming that's been done on the City Hall and Liquor Store site, and some questions that we need to answer ourselves. So with that said, I think I'll turn it over, and you can go from that. Tell us who you are, and get started.
I'm Jim McCombe. I'm the President of McCombe Group, a real estate and retail consulting business in Minneapolis. It's been a pleasure to work on this study, and get to understand a little more about your economy, and how it relates to your liquor enterprise. And I have a handout that I'm gonna walk you through to give you the high points of what makes your community unique from others on the North Shore.
Yeah, if you can speak a little louder, it'd be helpful for everyone. The mic doesn't actually-
There's no amplification.
Yeah, so hopefully that's not a hardship.
The first page of the handout is the location of liquor stores in your town. It's the handout, not the report. And the important thing about this drawing is, you all know where your liquor store is. But one of the things that's important about convenience goods is that they have visibility from the main highways. And you're somewhat removed from the Highway 61, so I would say you have obstructed visibility. There are some things that can be done with that as a part of the remodel, but I don't consider that a significant issue. Your current store has about 842 linear feet of shelving for merchandise display. And later in the report, we'll talk about what that means in comparison to your competition. But it's an important way to judge how competitive a store is based on their merchandise offerings. More importantly is the daily traffic counts. And what I found interesting about this is that if you look at 2018, the highest traffic counts are west of Broadway. The second highest are east of Broadway, and there are 3,100 trips on Broadway. So there's a significant portion of the Highway 61 traffic that comes down Broadway past your store. And I was intrigued that of the 3,100 cars, I'm sorry, the 4,000 cars east of Broadway, 1,600 are up and down the Gunflint Trail. So. Map two is the competitive liquor stores in the North Shore area. Your primary competition is the three stores, Lutz and Tofti and Temperance. But Two Harbors is on the way with a liquor store that has about $100,000 a year more in sales than your store. The others, Lakeview is not particularly competitive, and the two municipal stores in Silver Bay and Beaver Bay don't really play into this, because they're both liquor and, well, on and off sale operations with small volume. And this, this table is not in the handout, but I thought it was important. This is compiled from the state auditors reports on municipal liquor stores, but Grand Marais has a population of 1,325 estimated for 2019, compared to 3,400 for Two Harbors. When we look at sales volume, their, your 2017 sales volume was in excess of 2.2 million, and they were about 2.4 million. But the community is almost three times the size in population of Grand Marais. The difference to this is your visitor business. And they are, visitors make a major contribution to the sales of your store. As part of our study, we conducted customer spotting with the store management and employees. You may have seen the form, it simply asked people, customers, for their home address, and why they stopped at your store today. We had about 800 survey responses, which is the largest response we've had in 40 years for a single store.
Nice.
Wow.
So hats off to the staff. And based on this data, we geocoded it, so we could, each of the blue dots on the map represents a survey respondent. And when you get into the Grand Marais area, you've got dots on top of dots, so it doesn't look as big as it really is. Based on the survey responses, we could delineate the trade area, which in this case is all of Cook County. In 45 years of doing this, I've never defined the trade area as just a county. So this is somewhat unique, but it's what the data tells us.
So, Jim, when you did this, did you do that by zip code?
No, we did it by street address.
Okay, so when Grand Marais, so when Grand Marais comes up, if it's Gunflint Trail, where would, where would that fall under this? I mean, they're not, they're not a community.
They're in the county. We're not, we're not concerned about the community. We're concerned about where your customers live, and they live-
Right, but it's the same, the trade area is either Grand Marais, Grand Corrid, Hovland, Lutz and Schroeder, or Tofti. Those are all incorporated areas with a, with a zip code. Areas like the Gunflint Trail are the same zip code as Grand Marais.
Right.
But yet, they're not, obviously, in the city. So they could live, they could be 50 miles away.
Yes.
So that would still fall within the Grand Marais trade, the Grand Marais?
No, it's, it's not done by zip code. It's done by street address, so that if, whereas you look along the Gunflint Trail, there are a series of blue dots. Those are the residents of individual customers that we picked up in the survey.
Well, I guess, I think, I think the question, what the question is, is that on Table Five here, when we're looking at Table Five, we don't see any delineation for the percentage of the survey respondents that, that specifically identifies them as Gunflint Trail residents.
I don't think he's trying to draw that distinction, even though he's showing that split by zip code, because people did report their zip codes. He's highlighting that where all of those zip codes are included in one group, the trade area. So whether or not-
Oh, okay.
-the zip code caught the person's address is not particularly relevant.
The problem with zip codes is that they cover way too much geography to make this type of research accurate.
I would agree. That's why, that's why I asked the question. Because it could be 60 miles away, and, and still be the same zip code.
But if they were 60 miles away, the blue dot wouldn't be inside Cook County.
Well, it could be in Cook County. It could be at the end of Gunflint.
There's one right there, 60 miles away. And thank you for your business.
Yeah.
Well-
So maybe you can, you could explain, then, to me, this might be useful, a useful exercise, to describe the difference between trade area and inflow. Because I'm, I'm assuming that, you know, the surveys, the survey folks that, that you got all these, like, almost 800 respondents for, you know, that adds up to 100%, 52.8% of them were from the trade area, and 47.2% were from the inflow, and, you know-
Maybe it's worth waiting and seeing how some of the demographic data is used. That might answer that question.
It's within the county or out of the county. One or the other, right?
I know, but I, what's the definition of trade area versus inflow?
The county.
Well, I know, but like, that, I don't know if you're getting it, like, what's the usefulness of, what's your, what's the usefulness of using a term that says trade area, rather than, than just saying county? And maybe I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not in your, in your job place, so I don't make the difference. So why are you calling it trade area, instead of just saying county?
We're calling it a trade area, because that's, for our research, that's what it is. The fact that the trade area and the county are co-determined is, is just an accident. So what's important here is that 53% of the survey respondents lived in the trade area, and 47% lived somewhere else, and-
So what is a trade area? That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm asking you.
So, let me try it.
It's Cook County.
Normally, normally, Jay-
Definition, like, define trade area.
The, the area where you get your regular customers from.
Is that what it is? Like, the trade area is the place where you get the majority of our regular customers from?
Well, in most cases, yes, you get more customers from outside.
I'm talking about rough gen, like, rough definitions. Dumb it down for me. I'm, I'm, I don't know what we're talking about here.
Later on in the, in the report, they're gonna start looking at demographic information of people that live in the trade area, and people that live in the info areas, and try to determine the amount of business that you should expect based on income and other factors in and outside of the trade area. So that's what it's relevant to in this report.
So is the, so the trade area is where we get the majority of our customers from? Inflow is additional customers? I mean, this is, like, I'm, I'm struggling with the terminology.
Okay.
Not where they are, or anything like that. I want to understand how we're, how we're classifying these things, or like, why we're classifying them in these different, in these different terminologies.
Okay, maybe it would be helpful if we proceed on, and I explain how that relates to the data that is in each of the tables.
Okay. Maybe that'll help.
And the key thing here from this is the 47% that come from outside the trade area inflow. Some from Canada, many from the Twin Cities area, and 22% from elsewhere. And we included, in the survey, we had communities in Europe where the respondent was shopping in your liquor store. And we frequently see that. We go to the table six at the bottom of the page. This table is based on the survey respondent checking off a column on the form for each of these categories, so we get a sense of what motivated them to shop at your store. So we had of the trade area, 56%, or 58% close to home. But on your inflow, 13% considered your store close to home. We don't know why, but that's what they check. Close to work is 27%, very low on the inflow. Driving by, 22% for the trade area, 44% for the inflow. That's the business traveling up and down Highway 61. That's the business traveling up and down Highway 61. Running errands is not so important, but regular customer, 63 percent of the trade area respondents considered themselves regular customers and 30 percent of the inflow respondents considered themselves regular customers. That 30 percent is a very high response for that question.
Jim, in that, if I can ask, in that table, under the reason there's other, which was kind of high in the inflow, what, what things might fall under the other category?
Well, it's whatever they think it is.
Okay.
And doing a survey, you never want to have a spot where they can't put a check mark.
So the other was a box basically on the survey then, for them to use?
Gives them a chance to say something.
Okay. Thank you.
Map four is a close-up view of the customer spotting for the Grand Murray vicinity. And you can see how detailed it gets as the dots are strung out along the various roads in the area. And again, a heavy cluster in Grand Murray. This kind of data, we couldn't capture by zip code. Based on the survey responses, we delineated the, the trade area, which is the geography from which your store is drawing the major portion of its sales. We need a trade area so we can do the financial analysis and make all of the projections necessary to determine the sales potential for your store. So Grand Murray in 2019, 1325 population, 5,400 for the trade area and we put northeastern Minnesota just for reference. Annual growth rate, Grand Murray was negative in population growth, whereas the trade area had an annual growth rate of half a percent. So again, the area outside the trade area is more important. Or should say, the area outside Grand Murray is more important to your liquor store's performance than the Grand Murray. A household, similar story, 708 in Grand Murray, 2,800 in the trade area, and the households have been growing faster in the rural part of the trade area as opposed to Grand Rapids. The next page is average household income and median household income. The trade area has a higher average household income and a higher median household income with the less affluent residents living in Grand Murray. Not a big deal, it's just a fact. When we look at it, a number like $48,000 median household income doesn't mean much because your incomes fall in a range. So if we look at the households above 75,000, in 2019, 25 percent for Grand Murray, 32 percent for the trade area. Above 100,000, 14 percent in the Grand Murray, 19 percent in the trade area. And above 100,000, 150,000, 5.6 percent compared to 7.8 percent. So even though you may have a low median or a low average household income, you have members of the community with significant income and that's more important to the operation of your liquor store than the median or the average itself. The households with incomes above 75,000 are graphically displayed on map seven. And the way to read this map is the lightest green color is 0 to 25 percent of the households with incomes above 75,000. The very darkest green is households where 75 to 99 percent of the households have incomes And then there are those that are in between. Table 12, the, this was an interesting table when I figured it out because in Grand Murray and your trade area, roughly 80 percent of the residents are over 20, age 20. For the northeast Minnesota, it's 78 percent and for the state of Minnesota, it's 75. What that means is for your population, you have a higher number of people that can legally buy liquor. And that's an important factor. You also have a high educational attainment with, in 2019, in the city, 45 percent of your residents have a college or college, or advanced degree, 41 percent for the trade area and 30 percent for northeastern Minnesota. So again, you're starting to see factors of income and educational attainment that are different from the regular population based on thinking about average household income or median. Table 14 was a real eye-opener for me because we looked at the owner occupied and renter occupied housing in the trade area. And in 2019, there were roughly 2,800 owner or renter occupied housing units in the trade area. The seasonal homes are estimated at 2774, so you've got almost as many seasonal homes as you have permanent residents. So that's another group of customers and they're part of that inflow calculation. Employment in Grand Murray, healthcare, social assistance, retail, trade and accommodations and food services represent 61 percent of your employees. The next category, educational services, arts, entertainment and recreation are another 18 percent. So those five categories represent about 80 percent of the employment in your community. Okay. Table 20 is the estimated sales potential for liquor stores in the trade area. So we defined the geography of the trade area, based on the population and the households, we can estimate the estimated sales potential or purchasing power, which is an important factor. And you know, it goes from 1.5 million to 2.2 million in 2025. And these are current dollar estimates, so that they reflect what we expect purchasing power to grow in the future.
Is this assuming, assuming continued operation as we are or is that-
No, this is just purchasing power of the trade area residents. Table 21 is the distribution of sales between liquor, wine, beer and other. And for some reason, the other category is declining, which is causing the liquor, wine and beer categories to increase. I think the distributions are relatively normal. When we looked at the product that was included in the other, it included some items that would be liquor or wine and they seem to be weeding out over the years. Figure one is the seasonality of liquor, wine and beer. Interestingly, beer is more popular in the summer and spirits are more popular in the And wine tends to follow spirits in the seasonality. Okay, table 23 again relates to the trade area and the geography issue. We took, let's work with 2018 column, but the purchasing power is estimated 1.7 million. The retail sales are 2.2 million roughly. The trade area was estimated to represent 1,506,000 of those sales and the inflow sales were 1,191. So your inflow sales are higher than your trade area sales. Now, several years ago, I mentioned, we did the study in Two Harbors. In Two Harbors, 70 percent of their sales came from the trade area and 30 percent came from outside the trade area or inflow. So two communities on the North Shore, totally different dynamics to their trade area and Table 24 is the projections for the future. So in the last table, roughly 60 percent of the sales were coming from the trade areas. So we took, assumed that with a new store, you'd increase your market share somewhat. So we had 62 percent to 63 percent coming from the trade area. Based on your current inflow sales are about 1.564,000 dollars, again, larger than your trade area sales. And then we're adding up the sales potential is 2021, which would be the first year you could have a store open, sales are 2.5 million, increasing gradually over the five-year So what does it take to make this happen? So it's a cute, part of this is the size of the store. So your current store has a merchandise area of about 1475 square feet, which is 44 percent of the space. We're recommending 3,600, which would be 65 percent of the space in a new store, which would be about 5,500 square feet. The balance would be storage and I, when I did a survey of the store, I think we identified seven different areas where liquor products were stored.
Sounds about right.
And incredibly inefficient.
Yeah.
So part of what needs to happen is a part of your design process, working with your staff, determine actually how much storage space you're going to need if it was properly organized and with shelving and the floor spacing. You currently have about, well, you have 14 cooler doors, we're recommending 24 so that you can put more beer, cold beer, also do more wine and cocktail storage and beer. As an option, you could do a beer cave. That would take about four cooler doors to do the frontage and then you could store in back, but that should be about 240 square feet.
When you say a beer cave, Jim, does that mean that customers would actually walk into that area then?
Yeah.
cooled area?
It really works out neatly because you can just bring the beer into the beer cave and the customer carries it out.
Right, exactly.
You're only lifting it once.
Right. So that's, that's your guy. This, this last page then is, it's future sales potential and then the proposal for space?
Yes.
Okay. Well, cool. Is that, is there anything else that you-
Well, I think that we've increased the sales potential due to a larger store, improved store design and expanded product selection. And one of the things that's important is you look at the page that had the, it's not in this, it's in the report. There's a page in the report that identifies the linear square, linear footage of liquor products by store. All of the competitor stores except for Two Harbors have about half the merchandise display that your state has. If you build the new store, you will be the largest liquor store on the North Shore. And the reason for that is the visitor traffic that you're able to attract to your store. And with increased selection, you'll have a better opportunity to increase your sales.
Okay.
And part of this is to understand the dynamics of the visitor market. Most of the visitors coming to the eastern part of Cook County or Cook County will, many of them can stay down in the Lutzen, Schroder, Toffey area. And I got the information from the Visitors Bureau today that there are 7,700 pillows in Cook County. That's, that's, the definition in the travel industry is that's one, one person in bed. So if you've got a queen size bed, it could be counted as two pillows. If you get into a house with multiple bedrooms, but you've got about 4,000 pillows down at the Lutzen, Schroder, Toffey area. You should do everything you can to encourage those visitors to spend a day in Grand Murray and patronize your liquor store because it's going to be a better shopping experience because of the larger inventory.
And for the, that table that he was talking about that shows the comparison of the linear footages is on page seven of the bound one, in case anybody wants to take a look at that. Very good. So do you have, is there any, anything else you'd like to cover for that? I mean, you said we weren't going to go through this one. All right.
I think that we listed the recommendations. You can read those rather than my regurgitating them to you.
Okay.
And I think that you've, you've got an excellent opportunity to improve your sales by focusing on both your trade area and your inflow sales. You probably have more potential on the inflow sales with the visitors.
Jim, on the recommendation for the merchandise area and storage area, is there some kind of standard correlation you have about how much storage area you need based on the merchandise area? I mean, we're going to double, more than double our merchandise area, but keep the storage area at the same.
Pretty similar, yeah.
I mean, are we just being so inefficient that, that the storage area would be able to be accommodated in the same amount of space?
Yeah.
Probably.
In the, in the main liquor store, you've got storage areas with shelving. You go into some of the other areas, it's just products stacked on the floor.
Right.
If you create a larger storeroom efficiently, it's made out for storage and aisles and circulation, you should be able to put a lot more merchandise in a smaller space. In answer to the question, typically, your back of the house would be 30 to 35% of the space in the store. Now, caveats to that is that if making large buys to get better price on product is an important part of your store operations, you need to have a place to store it while you're selling it. And so that's the part where your liquor store manager and the architects have to work together to say, what is the appropriate square footage for the storeroom?
But this would, this would be a standard, and if you wanted to do some other things based on doing bulk purchases and that kind of thing, you'd maybe mix up some considerations.
Yeah, you have to do what makes sense.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Jim on the market study?
I guess the only question I had is that, you know, we had talked earlier about, you know, other alternate sites, and this doesn't have any consideration of alternate siting or anything like that. Is that going to come up as part of the LHB conversation, or are we, you know, moving to just a single site consideration?
I considered that. I didn't put it in the report because my understanding, you were focused on having a liquor store as part of City Hall. If there is a quarter block roughly up a third on Highway 61, it probably could accommodate a 4,000 square, or 5,000 square foot liquor store. And it would have the advantage of being on Highway 61. That might do a little more business than where you're currently located because everybody that drives by may not see the liquor store where it currently is. But I'm not sure it would offset the costs of doing a freestanding store.
One of the other sites we had considered and talked about was the site up for the county, for the city as a public works garage up on top of the hill on the highway.
I wouldn't do that.
That was, that was not considered, or not, you just dismissed that as a?
Dismissed it as not being prudent.
Okay. And for, I mean, do you have a basis for that?
Yeah, because you're part of an established retail area in the downtown, and that's more, that's more important to your business than being at the top of the hill and having just really the drive-by traffic to live off of. That location would change shopping patterns.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm actually just trying to make sure we understand, you know, what the basis is for this kind of, this recommendation. I mean, that's, that's good information to know because I think we've had this conversation a number of times, and there's been some thought that another site with greater visibility and better parking and more accessibility would possibly be a better site where we have the flexibility and not have the confines of this site here to, you know.
Your site here, we were, we had a charrette session with the architects today to talk about what the new store might look like. And one of the things is parking. Parking is seldom over, actual demand is seldom over four spaces per thousand. And if you had a 5,500 square foot store, that would be about 22 parking spaces. We talked about, and you'll see this later, but taking and moving the curb on the City Hall side of First to create angle parking, pick up some more parking, there's more parking behind the building, and then you've got the Broadway parking. You're going to create enough parking to satisfy the needs of your store. And to put this in perspective, for a client, we had to count the parking utilization for the Duluth Target store and the Duluth Cold store. So I counted the buildup and the tail off of parking. On the second busiest day in the Christmas shopping season, neither store got to four spaces per thousand. So a lot of what we think is parking need is not parking need, it's less than that, based on the studies that are done, and I've seen other studies that confirm my finding on the Duluth example.
Yeah, we've had a lot of conversations about parking in the downtown area, and, you know, I think the need and.
If you've got a retail area, you're always be talking about parking.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Anything else? Any other questions for Jim? All right. Well, thank you so much for that presentation, Jim.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll move on.
I've enjoyed it.
Yeah, you can tell. We'll move on next to the design concepts. So that's LHB, so we'll do a change up here, a change of regard, so to speak, and you guys can jump in and go for it.
There it is.
Okay.
Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Been a little while since I was here talking about, in general, this, this concept. And so here we are. This is Sarah Phillips, our project manager, and Bruce Cornwall, designer, and I'm Mike Fisher, all from LHB. And we're here today primarily because we wanted to hear what Jim had to say, to see him present the report to you. And we thought if we're going to come here and do that, this would be the perfect day to start our process in terms of thinking about how to utilize this site or any other site we would be looking at. So we came up here today with some exploration in mind. You know, we did the pre-work, but really to be here, to walk around and experience this from, from all sides. So what we're trying to do is, and also, we wanted to spend the day with Jim and have him be sitting at the table with us and have us prod and poke and ask questions, a lot of what you were just asking, you know, why this, is this the best site, really? So we came up here knowing that this was a site that was important and that you've been utilizing, but also the question is, is it the best site? Or there's, is there something we're overlooking? And if you can go to the next slide. Of course, I want to make sure that the team was understanding what your goals and objectives were, and we don't have to repeat them, they're yours. And actually, what's interesting about your goals and objectives is they're the same kind of goals and objectives that a good urban designer would have, a good architect would have. Because ultimately, and I talked about this last time I was here, whatever investment you end up making, you want to enhance your downtown, you want to enhance your community. So we want to make sure whatever we decide here is doing that, besides, you know, selling liquor, right? Or providing meeting space for your City Hall. So what we found in really talking with Jim and looking at the other sites that, you know, I highlighted at the last meeting, you know, some vacant sites, Jim mentioned one, the one up the hill, all of that, you know, what we learn about liquor stores in particular is that, you know, while visibility is important, and this site, while it's not right on the highway, has different, two different vantage points where you can get visibility, and at a stoplight especially, where, you know, some people are actually stopping and looking. So there's that opportunity there. And if we can maximize the actual location on this site with the liquor store, getting it to the right corner, we can even enhance that on this property. There's also the pedestrian access thing. So we all stayed overnight in a hotel. I, you know, every time I'm up here, I'm staying in a hotel, and I watch that pattern. I watch, and it's me sometimes, right? Walking from the hotel to the liquor store. That's a real thing. So we talk about that inflow that Jim was talking about, and much of that's coming from people outside your trade area, staying in these hotels, walking into that liquor store. So you want to, you don't want to lose that. And that's where I think Jim was saying, up on the hill, you kind of lose that element. And then the adjacent uses. So liquor stores go really well with grocery stores and hardware stores. So when you look, like in Edina, where I'm on the city council, we're, all of our liquor stores are either next to or attached to a grocery store or a hardware store. So when I look at your sites, this site has, is really in the middle of two grocery stores and a hardware store. You couldn't find a location more well-suited from that parameter. So I like that a lot. And then we have the issue of parking and deliveries, and that's just something, no matter where you pick, we have to, we have to manage that, that kind of issue. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. And then when we get to your goals and objectives and think about your downtown, we want to do the best job possible with whatever form of building you end up with to sort of establish that, that street edge. So your stronger streets have a nice street edge, and this one loses it a little bit. And so if you're going to invest in a building, the fact that you could enhance your street edges on one or in some, in this case, maybe two streets, would be a real positive. Jim mentioned the diagonal parking on First. We kind of were looking at that, and I think, and Bruce will talk a little bit about just our diagramming, that I think there's a real possibility to enhance and increase the parking on that street a little bit. We're going to talk about the, how you think about a building with a City Hall, a liquor store, and Bruce is going to talk about the program elements that we're kind of working on here today, but creating real separate entrances that we know there's a sensitivity. People don't want to be going, what appears to be into a city office and feel like someone thinks they're going to the actual liquor store. So there's a need for some separateness there, but also, and clarity. And then I want to talk about the toilets. We got to talk toilets here. So you want to go to the next slide? So I took a lot of photos today, but I'm most proud of this one. It's just a little, it's kind of artsy. You know, I got the le, the beautiful hillside in the back. But it's a real thing, and I keep, I'm like pressing everyone today. It's like, we got to talk toilets because, because what you're doing here is, is not the norm, right? You're providing public toilets in a way, I mean, I was astounded. You know, it's a weekday in October, now granted, it's a lot of people up checking out the leaves, but the number of people walking up to that yellow door is astounding to me. And I think about the museum in Canal Park, and this was years ago. Everyone is very proud of that museum being the number one tourist attraction in Minnesota. Well, actually, the toilets were the number one attraction in Minnesota, and I'm, I'm serious about that. They went to the toilets and then, oh, a museum! And, and if you think about drivers, the inflow part of this, if you can have an amazing restroom experience for people that are coming up and down the shore, you'd be surprised. Well, it's not a surprise, they're doing it today. So how do you take advantage of that? If you're going to keep doing that, how do you drive those people right into your liquor store? And, and the design is going to either help or hinder that. But it's going to be important for us to understand what your goals are, because we can, we can make this work a number of ways. And Bruce is going to talk about just diagrammatically how we might think about that. And one of the things I noticed is that, and I'm really curious about, and we got to do more talking, about, you know, I remember when the tourist information was in that structure with the toilet rooms, and now it's not there. So you have a little less sort of observation happening of the visitors coming and going. And I'd be very curious, we got to learn a little bit more about, is there more vandalism, less vandalism? How are people treating that space versus before? And so these are all things we're going to want to dive into a little bit. So before I turn this over to Bruce, I just want to say that we don't have a design to share with you. We have some ideas that we were formulating today, and we just want to share the very basics, and if you have any reaction, that would be helpful, because we're going to be back in a few weeks with the, you know, designs that we're going to start showing you. So before we start marching off in different directions, it would be good to get some of that feedback. And the only other thing I, comment I would make, this idea of, when Jim talked about inefficient storage, that's not a management issue, it's, it's how you've been able to cobble together space in this building. And it's all the little jail cells. One thing I want to give a lot of creative kudos to the, to the liquor store staff. I noticed big house liquor was in the cell, and I think that was really the appropriate in terms of placing, you know, I think, you know, how are they doing this? It's like, well, cell block two is where you get the wine. And, but, so they've been really creative with the space they have, but hopefully, we could do better in a new situation. So with that, I'm going to have Bruce take and talk about the diagramming.
Great. Thank you very much. My name is Bruce Cornwall, as Mike said. So the thing that's interesting about our team is that Mike, in addition to being our, our toilet room expert, as you can say it, passion, yeah, he is an urban designer. So we approach this, as you might be gathering, not just as a building, but as how the impact on the city, and I think that's a real advantage to the approach that we're taking. The, and another thing to, I think, reinforce is that what we're going to show is really two kind of very loose, frankly, ideas that are really more to get the conversation started about some key elements. And I think there's, and we aren't looking for decisions, we're looking, hopefully, for comments and input. And I think there's going to be six things that we need to think about. One is the idea, do we do one or two stories? You know, how does that kind of, you know, how does that feel? How does that, you know, there's pluses and minuses to each one of those. This idea about the toilet room access, we do need to talk a little bit more about that, even for example, how long they might be open. That would affect, I think, the plan. The idea of phasing the construction in a sense that if we need to, to try to keep the existing liquor store or portions of it as much as we can. Further on, as we get into discussion, you might hear that moving the store temporarily does have potentially some significant costs that might not be worth it versus keeping it in its current location with actually maybe some reduced footprint.
Just for construction you're talking about.
For construction, right. So that's consideration that we'll be looking at, and we've just started to dip our toe in that, but it's important. Parking, truck access, another one that hasn't been talked an awful lot, but is really the partner space, you know, in terms of who you might have included as partners in this currently with the, like the EDA, et cetera. And then lastly, which you'd already talked a little bit about with Jim, was the idea is really the current location where the, actually, the deep, you know, kind of dive really needs to happen. So those six things, I think, are ultimately what you really need to be thinking about as we kind of do our work and do the presentation. So this really is just a way to begin the conversation. So you're very familiar with the existing site. Of course, you can see the building up there at the corner of First and Broadway. If we change, that basically covers the, the existing property, and that's in a If we change, that basically covers the, the existing property, and that's in a roughly about 11,000 square foot footprint over your site, okay? That, and that, that includes the, the toilet room there, which is not actually 100% accurately configured there. But anyway, so you have about 11,000 square feet. In our programming that we did a few weeks ago, I met with, just so you might be aware of this, Chris, liquor store manager, staff in general from city hall, the department heads, and your partner groups, Jim Boyd and Pat, I think it's Campanero, if I pronounced that correctly, to kind of talk about what they have now and what they see that their needs are. So some of what you're going to see is based on those conversations. We're in the process of refining that, and we're not really going to necessarily get into any of the details of that today. But then, of course, based some of that on Jim's report, coming up with about the 5,500 square feet or so, and that's right now what we're kind of using as that model. That's the 3,700 or 3,600 for the retail floor, and then the balance being the, the storage. So right now, the program is about 14,000 square feet. So that's been expanded, let's say, from, you know, what you have now, 11,000, and despite its inefficiency, you know, there's obviously, if you really took that in efficient space, it would probably be less, you know, it might actually be a 9,000 square foot if you didn't, weren't storing things in the, in the prison. So that difference is made up in, I think, four basic things. One is the toilets that are either, you know, how they might be expanded for the public use, there was a need, it seemed to be, to expand them a bit in terms of providing the, an increased number. The liquor store is obviously the largest. The second is probably the chambers size, you know, in terms of the size of what this room is and how it would be configured. Tonight is a good example, where, you know, it's, it's a bit crowded, and so how can this be configured in a way that's larger, but not too large, but it can also serve multiple purposes for larger meetings, et cetera.
And also, I couldn't help note, you, you really want, in a council chambers, for people to be able to come and go and not sort of, you know, get into the disrupting the meeting. And there's really no way to do that in this room. So there are all those kinds of things that we can, we can make those improvements in a new room.
Yeah, and sufficient is having the bathroom right there, it's, doors going outside, there's lots of ways. But we're not tonight going to get into the details of that, you'll see that develop, but just want to let you know, this is where some of the input is, where we're getting larger. And then lastly, is the idea of really of a public space lobby, either for spill-out, for meetings like tonight, just the sense of, you know, a, a place of arrival for city hall, et cetera. We're assuming that there's going to be a little bit extra space in what's right now is a smaller kind of lobby. So right now, those are kind of the drivers that are kind of driving that change from 11 to 14,000 square feet. Okay? Next slide. So this diagram shows the current 11,000 square feet, how it's broken up, and I, it took me quite a while to kind of figure it out, and I'm still not so sure I do have it figured out, but these stories and the, as I got into it, it really became quite the game of trying to kind of measure this up and figure out where everything is going. And I think we're up in the M1 right now, if you can kind of get your bearings, this is oriented north up. The lightish green at the top listed as R is the current retail space, the kind of the floor space for the liquor store. All of the S1s are the different storage kind of areas. The, the light green at the bottom is primarily the city hall with the lobby, et cetera. The G on the lower right, the kind of purplish is your current garage. And I, in sitting down talking with the department heads, I thought one of the most interesting stories for me was, is that this used to be the teen center, I think, this room.
At one time.
At one time.
It also was, it was our off-sale, or on-sale liquor bar.
Yeah, okay.
The actual bar is still sitting in our storage area, if you got to walk through one of them.
Maybe that needs to be incorporated somehow, as the diaphragm of council. But I thought it was very interesting, their stories, and they were telling lots of fun stories about being teenagers using this and this configuration, so it was, it was fun talking with those guys. But, so basically, as you can see, that your space is not, and you know it's not being used particularly well, but they're all functions that need to kind of stay here. The, the two lines, the black dash line and the red dash line are, to a certain extent, efforts that where we might be able to kind of cut off and demolish everything to the right from those, and still keep portions of the liquor store open. Again, this is not resolved, we're telling you, this is just what we're starting to kind of look at. And the important thing is, the thing to the left of the black dash line, that's where your coolers are, and those are the things that are very expensive to move and to relocate for any particular reason. And I think Jim would also tell you that the right-hand R, that's right to the black line, is actually represents, in terms of square footage, you can see it's actually over half of, or what your retail is, but it holds quite a bit less product. So in other words, that's the least efficient side, I think, of how you're doing it. So over the period of the pre-design, we're going to be looking a little bit better where bearing walls are, where structure is, where it might make sense to be able to peel it away, so you could stay operational. Now ultimately, if you decide that's worth the investment to move it, that's cool, we won't let that drive everything that we're doing, but we think we owe it to you to have that kind of research done as best we can, so you guys can make a good decision about that. So when we come back in three weeks, I think on the 30th, we'll have more information along those lines, still not resolved, it'll be much more, a deeper dive for you guys to kind of respond to.
And I'm just going to, for the, just to make sure, it's absolute clarity on this, he's not suggesting in any way that we keep part of the old building as far as, you're part of your future operation here.
Correct.
Simply a staging thing to keep, because the thing we know we have to do is keep selling liquor during construction of whatever you decide on, because you can't afford to lose the revenue, and you can't afford people to change their patterns, right? The patterns need to kind of stay as similar as you can while you're making a switch.
Kind of like Jenga, you know, you'd be able to figure out what you can take down before the whole thing falls down.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a little bit of that.
Yeah.
But the patterns, you know, it's those, it's not, not so much your trade area folks, it's the inflow people. You don't want them to start stopping in Two Harbors and saying, oh, this, this works too. You'd rather have them stay with the pattern of coming here.
Have you ever tried to get into Two Harbors liquor store in the summer?
Hey.
Or on a Sunday, or a Friday evening?
Okay. So, next slide. So this is, this is, jump right in. So this is, shows what would be essentially one way, it's kind of a block diagram of how a one-story concept might lay out. Again, this is organized the exact same way, north up. The blue represents the liquor store, we all seem to agree quite strongly that the, that 100% retail corner at Broadway and First is really an important one for our entrance. And then moving your way down Broadway, you have, in this case, is where we wanted to explore the idea of the public toilets actually being off a public lobby. Again, this is just an idea for, for kind of to chew on, that might be open as long as the toilets are. This might be a consideration that we don't keep our toilets open for 24 hours, maybe they close automatically at 12, but that lobby could be open, just the lobby for that period of time. So all entry to the toilets would be from that lobby. Now, it also could be from the street, but the idea here is that we only need to build really one set of toilets that can be used by the complex, as opposed to one that's outside and one side that's inside. So that's the thought process behind this idea. And again, there'll be other ideas of commodities, but this is one. The other idea too is with the lobby being kind of a, you know, kind of like a central space, you come in from Broadway, you turn left, you're right at city hall, there's a small public meeting room that could be either used or rented, and then, of course, you have the chambers, which is, I think we're doing 50%, right now, 50% greater than this space, so this is about 800, 900, and we're thinking about 1200 to 1500.
So, so we're talking, I think that shows about 1,200. To put it in perspective, I ran over to the county building, that's about 1,500. So it'd be a little, it'd be a little smaller than that, but bigger than this, somewhere in between.
Right.
Bigger than my house. It's bigger than my house.
Well, we'll talk about how the better or different ways to lay that out as well, or it's this model, or you do have a diaphragm and you have it smaller than it. And then the light green in the corner is basically garage storage for city hall. And then you can see, as the parking's organized in this version, you could still pull larger trucks through on the lower, on the southern half, they could still turn out onto the alley, service all the other businesses that are on the alley, and pull up and be able to offload into kind of a central delivery area, go into the liquor store, or also part of the mechanical kind of back-of-the-house stuff. It could also be then parked at the top part, you could have reserved parking or our liquor store parking only for 10 minutes or 15 minutes if you wanted to, gives you, you're handicapped off, you wouldn't have to do that as well, but then you also have the parking down at the bottom. So this gives you, and this is real rough, about 18 spaces, and that includes two that would be handicap accessible. There might be a little bit more, might be a little bit less if we have to go this route, but you currently have, do you think 20, what, on, on the property right now?
I think I count 24 in the lot area.
Right now. So if your current lot, there's about 24, this would be 18. So there, with this idea right now, this is one, this would be a net loss of six. So I've.
But we thought we could gain five or six in the diagonal parking, so on the whole, you'd have about the same number of parking spaces, but it's important to show you the ramification of a one-story building on this site.
What's the, what's the total square footage of a one-story projection like this?
This is about 14, 14 and a half. So then, it's again, it's about a 3,000 square foot difference in what you've got now, in terms of a footprint. Okay? And again, the idea here is that we'll be refining all these numbers when we come back. So.
Can I ask something, sorry, Bruce?
Absolutely.
The delivery area, does that allow for a truck to like back in and unload, an unloading dock space, or?
Has, for like a box trucks, and this would back up to it, but this does not allow a semi to back up to that space. I mean, you don't have that now, and I think you'd, probably with all the other deliveries that would happen, that, that would be something they'd still offload and then two-wheel it in, into the.
So if you can show, so if a semi was coming in from First, down the alley, they'd stop with the back of the truck, parallel with where he's showing delivery?
Yeah.
Just run it in and then take it out the other side?
Yeah, that makes sense. This, and this would have to be the radius of this, consider it has done now, right?
Yep.
And then they could still back up, and then they, they pull out. This radius of what's really needed to make sure you get a semi through there, we'll, you know, we'll look at that and see what it is. The box trucks up, it could pull in and then back in, just like the one today when we were there watching, and they would load into a central delivery area and then into the actual storage. So you'd use this also, I think, facilities folks would like it too, because obviously if this is your central mechanical room, you're going to have deliveries to that too, and that's a way you can share kind of loading at that point. So again, this is just one idea. The second one we wanted to look at, next slide, is, and this is a two-story scheme, and this jumps your parking, and again, this is one idea up to about almost 40, because now we're taking obviously what used to be an 11,000 square footprint and making it like six or something at this, at, at grade. So the difference on this version, again, just for your kind of iteration, is you can see we've added parking, I think the deliveries would still work basically the same way. Box trucks could still pull up and actually back up to a loading area, but semis would still have to swing in and offload from the alley. Parking up at the top could be the same, you could still have some dedicated party, parking if you were interested for the liquor store for short term, or not. But this version is basically, the first floor is primarily about the liquor store, and of course, we need the garage and storage for the city hall piece. And this version gets us back to the idea of public restrooms being kind of external only, and you have it much like they're worked right now. You know, there, it's people come in to them at any hours, they have never come inside the city hall and serviced much the way they are now with that, that great photo. This idea is there's essentially a, I'd call it a two-story kind of lobby, and that would have a stair, and there would be an elevator that you'd then use to get up to the next level. So next slide. So then, when here, you would basically have the, the council chambers essentially directly of where we are now, they'd kind of be up a second level. There'd be a little bit of an upper lobby, you'd have the, the, a city hall portion right next to it, same with the public meeting area, and then you'd create the public restrooms then would be used for internally, eternal, excuse me, internal use and access. So the two-story scheme, I think in a way, you need to kind of create two sets of toilets. Now, we'll determine finally how much you really need in terms of toile, it doesn't have to be that big necessarily, but you, in that case, you can't kind of double up and use the spaces, so that's one thing that, another thing that will be considered. There's a possibility, when we end up laying this out, there might be the potential to have some outdoor space at the second level that comes off the meeting area. I don't know if that might have opportunity at the second level to entice people to use the space more for, you know, commercial or other public meeting type things, that's something that we'll look at as well. There are some more costs with this associated, with the stairs, both exiting and kind of the grand stair, if you will, to come up, and, and of course, the elevator. In this case, we probably would end up putting a mechanical little penthouse on the roof, but we'll talk more about that next time with some imagery about how we think this could start to look as well, as we come back with different options.
One of the reasons they bring me with is, so they sent me up on the roof today, so I got pictures, so you start thinking about, well, what does that mean if on a second floor, are there, are there opportunities, you know, from view sheds and other things up there that we would want to look at as well?
Yeah. So I think we will love to entertain questions, if you are, have the energy to do that, or have do that right now, we'd be happy to do that. But again, I think, I want to just reiterate the six things. One is this idea of one or two stories, what do you like about that, what do you don't? The toilet room access, you know, should they just remain the way they are, always external? Could we get some benefits by moving them inside, but still have like a common lobby that would use that? The phasing and temporary, potential temporary relocation of the liquor store, rather than trying to keep as much of it operational, building what we can, and then knocking down the old stuff and finishing the parking, or the parking area. The idea of partner space, you know, was, these don't really necessarily show additional office space that might be required for the, you know, the business and the, you know, small business, et cetera, the EDA. Because I think there has to be some thought and decision about what does that mean in terms of you, in terms of they would be leased, you know, they would essentially be having a lease with you to sometimes, or you're, you know, kind of offering that up as a, you know, kind of a gratis space. That's a, a big thing that will then affect the organization and the square footage that's needed to be built. And then how it's, is that like a WeWork space, where everyone just kind of has open desks, or you create specific offices for specific, you know, partners? It's something I think you need to kind of take a good, hard look at. And lastly, I guess ultimately is commitment to the current location versus exploring, you know, additional ones either in town or elsewhere. I think we know the answer, but I mean, we, we need something confirmed like that, because if you want us to study other places, that's what we're here to do, what we think it makes sense so far to sit here. So I think that's it. Is that our last slide?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, so thank you very much.
Okay. I got a couple of questions off the top of my head. With the two-story concept, could you still have a portion of the building open to serve while construction's going on? Is that possible?
With that.
With that concept?
We think there is, but it depends on how mu, you mean be able to keep portion of the liquor store open?
Right, and the first, first floor, just one floor concept, you had that, but I'm wondering if we said, no, we want two-story, does that change anything, or do we think we still could?
We'd still keep it, and I think, conceptually, both of these work off the idea that we keep the liquor store, portions of it open. Implications of that, what that really means in terms of how we have to keep it temporary, because we take down your boiler and all that, so we have to heat it and everything. So there's costs associated with it regardless, but it might be better than relocating it. So yes, we're, we'll keep that in mind until you guys tell us otherwise that, no, don't worry about it, because then we might build more this way on First, just to get more street frontage, as Mike was talking about, from urban and walkability and those types of things, the more building fronts you walk by is the better, so.
The other question that came off the top of my head, and I'm not looking for specific, maybe a percentage, but if you do a one-story concept versus a two, typically a two-story is going to be more expensive?
I would say in this case, yes. Now, the thing.
Why, do you know a percentage roughly, Bruce? Would it be 10% more estimate?
I don't know.
Obviously, all that's hard.
Can you, Sarah?
I didn't know what that means.
Everything is so, typically when you're, you know, I would just say, just that elevator alone, alone, is going to be $150,000 that you don't have.
Okay.
On the other hand, facilities guys like two stories, because that means there's left room. roof, less roof, and that's always, that's always a challenge. But at the same time, then they also complain about the fact that it's hard to maintain elevators, because they're always, I don't care what, how good you get, they're always a maintenance issue. So then, so they kind of trade off at each other. I think it's typically cheaper, and you can see that's why they do strip malls and everything else, it's flat and one-story and you roll out the roof. And I know we're also talking about we want to maybe have pitch, Bruce, that's something that'll come later, but it's usually cheaper.
Okay.
And so, in both cases, I think we should be really clear, this idea of trying, and we don't know if it's even feasible, it's just our thoughts right now, trying to save the cooler side of the liquor, the cooler mean where the stuff's being cooled.
The actual cool.
It's cool. But saving a portion of that liquor store, if it's possible, if it's feasible, in both cases, and correct me if I'm wrong, we build out a portion of the new liquor store, but not all of the storage, because you're going to, right? So we don't know, there's some variability on the site.
I'm trying to do it so you don't do that.
Okay, so anyway, there's lots to figure out there, lots to figure out. I think what's interesting is my, you know, my initial thought was, oh, two-story would be much better just for a lot of reasons. And then as we started laying out, because, you know, you retain the parking and more of the site, but there's something intriguing about that one-story option, and keeping in mind that you wouldn't do a low one-story, you do, because it's retail, it's, you want higher ceilings in a room like this, that it can be a little bit taller of a building for a one-story, still have some presence, but it's again, starting to get that street frontage a little bit.
Right.
So there are some positives if we can all feel comfortable with what we can create for the parking, you know, make sure that, so that's all, lots of stuff to be worked on still in those regards.
Yeah, but that was interesting. The connectivity of from Broadway, down Broadway would be great if you had basically stores and things to walk along as opposed to the, what seems like there's missing something right now. So I think that there is benefits to that, but you've, obviously there's a bigger challenge with the parking, so.
Other questions?
Can I, do you know where the idea for, probably from the department hits, but the keeping the garage, I know it shrunk from the old police station or whatever that was.
Fire station.
Right. Well, we, you know, we, at this point, we kind of take the program information at face value, you know, what we're told, and so we're just starting that process of going, why do you really need that, and what's this, and why, and that's what we'll be doing. On that particular one, it seems though that with the challenges of the snow removal, to be able to have some of the equipment kept down here as opposed to haul them from public works seems to make sense, and of course, snow blowers and those types of things are always going down and need to be repaired, plus in particular, the Bobcat, I think is a bigger one, because when you're needed to really move some big snow piles, that's what you use, and so that's the idea, I think that that's really what would be down here. And then part of the garage would be a shop, so they can work and fix on some of the stuff down here as opposed to hauling it back up, and then we'd have that for some additional storage that's still being defined, really about what city hall really needs in terms of, you know, dead or long-term storage.
You think about all the mechanical and storage spaces we just have for operating materials, paper products, cleaning supplies, it's a surprising amount of space in this building. But even having said that, I like what, how he described it, that we haven't really pushed back on any of those initial asks yet, and I think we really need to quite a bit before we build a new space around an empty fire hall concept that we just grew into.
And that's something we always do, and we're always cognizant of, that as human beings, we adapt to our space, so much so that we actually think that that's the way it needs to be when we redefine what that space is. And some of it is very real, and some of it we have to kind of, as Bruce says, we have to kind of dig into more. But what we want to do for this exercise today is just say, well, if that's all real, does it fit here, and what does that feel like? That's really what all this is about, is just sort of fit plans and what it kind of quickly looks like when you start thinking about what's left of the site when you start doing this. Or can you get these different functions to be even compatible? Because when he first told me that we need to have a garage here, I'm like, oh gee, you know, like, it's already some interesting uses here, but clearly, we can make it work. So that's not, we know already that's probably not an issue, if it's an important thing to happen.
Could you go back to the first level on that one?
The first level of the two-
Just on that one, then maybe we can go back to the other one too, but, and that's the only thing, I guess, that popped up to me right away was, so there would be on this one, there's no access to the public restrooms from the inside of the building, right? So liquor store as well, and the only thing I guess I thought about that was the conversation that was brought up, just about like, you know, if you stop and then you're going, well, if you're, maybe you would walk around the block to go to liquor store because you stopped there, but just, I guess I, I don't know, I mean, try and grasp it all, but the idea of that shared lobby space on the, I personally, I'm drawn to this two-story idea, I like that better, I liked it a lot of it, but I think that's the one thing initially for me is I liked the more like lobby approach of the first one, the spread out one single level, and having that, you know, access space, so if you are waiting for somebody or, not that you couldn't have a space to sit and wait there too, but there, if you're waiting for your family or whatever, you're not standing outside waiting for them, you're, you know, in this condition.
That's a good point, we'll be, I like that too as a thought, and with more development, we'll work to see how that could fit with this, but we thought, let's try something very different, because there may be consensus that, no, it's got to be just like it is, I don't want anyone to come near this, you know, the actual city hall, but we need to have the public toilets.
And maybe, I mean, and that's all, even flip-flopping where the delivery and garage are with where the restrooms are, then you could access under the stairs into that restroom in the main level, right? And then still stack it for the city offices and things up top.
Right.
I don't know what that does for delivery and whatever, but that was my-
And you really hit on something from Jim's report that, that I was thinking about as you were presenting this scheme, it's like, he says in the, under the recommendations, that really nice restrooms tied or very close to the liquor store are actually drivers, especially for female customers. And I don't understand the science behind that, but if Jim says so, but, but I mean, I think it's a real thing, and that's one of the weaknesses I saw in just this diagram is exactly to your point.
And I think back to one of your earlier conversations about that restroom being a draw for the liquor store, I mean, I think we need to really maximize that potential in this configuration, it seems to me it's, it's really out of sight of the entrance to the liquor store, you don't get that benefit that, you know, all those people that use that, a lot of people use it, and I think a lot more will use one that's even more visible and-
Right. So there's, you know, and again, the ideas we'll come back with, would the council be interested in basically a shared lobby that actually is the public restrooms and next to the liquor store? I mean, we can explore those ideas, but I don't know if that's something that everyone seems is a great idea, we'll-
Are you saying that would be the entry into the liquor store then?
No, no, I don't think, I think we want that to be controlled kind of separately, but you could do it so, you know, it's basically, they're obvious that they're next to each other as opposed to around the corner, and if that's of interest, and that type of relationship is good, you know, we can explore those types of things.
Yeah, I was thinking along what Mike was saying earlier with the restrooms, you know, like you think about Disney World, wherever you attraction you go to, they dump you off into the gift shop, you know, you can't get out of there without going through the gift shop, well, maybe you can't get out of the bathroom without going to the liquor store.
Well, I'm, not even so much, not even for the dollar purpose of it, but I think having some sort of shared common lobby also gives a security and a safety purpose. And I think that that's something that we need to offer, that we kind of in this day and age forget, and back when I was 19, 20, 21, I worked at the liquor store, and that's one of the things that we talk about is safety of people and what happens and different things. I mean, I know we used to walk out the store and there's bushes right by the door, you know, kind of a dark area, or some people would go out back, or, so I kind of like that shared lobby area, that there's a bit of safety and security in that, whether you're an employee or a person that's just coming to use it, and then if we're truly, it's our building, we have the ability to have cameras and things that can see angles and things that happen. So it's not always about the dollar, but I think it's about the security of our people, whether they're our visitors or our staff.
Right. So there was a concept about even the shared lobby for Hall Three, where there would be a shared lobby that the liquor store, the bathrooms, and the city hall would all have the same, as opposed to what we did in the one version here, that there literally is only one door into the, into the liquor store as opposed into a common lobby, and there's a conversation about, I'm not really sure about if that really is what we want to have, but, you know, again, we can explore lots of different things, particularly if you guys have a strong interest and we know about it, so if we don't come up with it, we don't miss that, so we need that kind of input, and I think it probably also goes back through Mike, as you guys come up with ideas as you're thinking about it over the next, you know, because we want to come back with some different, more developed ideas in three weeks, so the sooner you can get any ahas or let's make sure these guys explore that.
Yeah, to be clear, we were just diagramming this this afternoon, he was markering these at 6:10, okay? So, yeah, he's still got it over his head. So these aren't in any way refined, that's what we want to come back.
Absolutely, can we provide the PowerPoint to Mike for distribution?
Yeah, and then if you have some thoughts, funnel them through Mike, and then we'll take those into account as we're developing some other ideas.
Yeah, and it's very important to remember that this, these are just initial kind of concepts, and we do this all the time, where we put lots of stuff on paper as we then test it and criticize it ourselves, so this is what it's meant to do, not to say, I don't like it, so, you know, it's, this could be better if you did this, or have you tried this, and then we'll, we'll try it, and then we'll tell you what works or, you know, what doesn't work.
You know, you raised the question of location and keep asking whether this is the site, and, you know, I don't think anybody's responded to that yet, and I've probably been the most vocal about looking at alternate sites just to see if there's something that, you know, is different than this site here. We know what this site does, it's a fantastic site, we have a fantastic operation, but could something else be better? And, you know, after hearing Jim's report and the data that he suggested, it sounds like this site really is the site that we need to put our effort into and try to maximize the potential for what we have here. I mean, I think that there's a lot of positives about it, and one of the concerns, and I don't even know if it's a positive or a negative, is how the Highway 61 project impacts the accessibility to the liquor store. Yes, we have Broadway, but we have a one-way street, so people coming down Broadway, you know, they've got to make sure that they, they have the ability to see and understand that they can park out here and get to the liquor store, and I see you have the entrance on the corner, which is, I think, a big benefit. Coming down First Street with the modifications on Highway 61 that are going to happen, the narrow way into the highway, that kind of just, kind of just jog off of 61 down to First, down on First Street is going to be much more pronounced, it's going to be actually a right-hand turn, that people are going to have to be more conscious about making, might not have the same, likely won't have the same appearance that it has now, you know, you kind of touched on, there's opportunities with, you know, doing things, suggestions on how to deal with, you know, making sure people get here to a building.
Yeah, the, once we get into some architectural ideas, again, not so, we'll, we'll show some of that, that should make, I mean, right now, the building is about as nondescript as you, I mean, it's like you're trying to hide the liquor store, and so-
You finally put a sign on it.
Yeah, so okay, that's good. So there'll be architectural things that we can do, I mean, there are obviously that fit within the character of Grand Marais and all that, that will make it look more like a happening deal that are going to draw your attention to. I think that's an important part of what we'll bring to the table for you.
And one of the things, besides sort of this design thing, is thinking about how you implement this, and we talked about this last time I was here, if we know there's going to be construction on Highway 61, that's going to have an impact on, you know, convenience, and this is a kind of convenience, people are picking up alcohol, and if they're too inconvenienced, it might, it'll impact sales during the construction of that highway. So what does that mean for when you decide to do this? Do you try to time it where, okay, it's a mess, let's go for it all at one time? And so those are things that, and that might impact decisions, you know, maybe as we talk about the cost of trying to keep a piece of the liquor store with the coolers during construction, as opposed to if we're having all this highway construction, you know, maybe that unique circumstance does make it make sense to go and create a little temporary place outside the construction zone and then just go for it, just do this site all at one time, lower cost here, and while the mess is happening and then the highway opens, you've got a brand-new building sitting here and you're off to the races. All of that is the kind of thing we're going to have to talk about and have ideas for, and we're just starting in that process right now.
So it looks like we have a couple of different options. One of the things is, we view these six items that Bruce showed us, or, you know, told us about as homework, and then we do, you know, we take in regards what our feelings about one-story, two-story, and then the slideshow here, and then we put together our thoughts and get those to Mike so that we can get feedback to these guys in a timely manner, or we go ahead and we talk through these things right now. So I'm, I'm not sure which one you guys are leaning towards, but I wouldn't mind doing it as homework.
Well, I know we need to keep moving because we have some other things to discuss. I, I love the two-story concept, I do, but if I'm logical, I go back to probably the one-story would be more of what I'm looking for, to take up a bigger space, like you said, there's, there's not a lot here to draw people, and I think by expanding on it, whether we choose to have other offices along the city hall, or whether we open up some other potential retail space for somebody else with access into city hall, you know, the two-story deal, I know with ADA regulations and everything else, and like you said, an elevator's $150,000, there aren't a lot of places in town that have an elevator, I can think of a hospital and I can think of senior housing, two places that have it. Courthouse, so for-
There's quite a few.
There are some, but I kind of like the, said, I love the two-story concept, but I would want retail up above our professional offices, then let's maximize it, and if we're not going to maximize it in that way, then I go back to the one-story and try and be prudent with our money and get our best bang for the buck, and like you said, we don't have to be a 10 or a 12-foot tall building. We have some room to expand and stand out and make it so that people that are going past on the highway there see us and want to come here. I think that leaves some opportunity for this corridor.
I mean, I would agree, I think the concept of making that street frontage more pedestrian-friendly rather than a parking lot is something that's, that's missing in this part of downtown, they would park them out across the street, pretty parking lot here, this, this would be, you know, a two-story building would just be kind of a standalone, I think we missed, missed the mark on trying to create that pedestrian orientation, which, you know, is our opportunity to do that in this part of town, plus I think there's some efficiencies and design things that might work better in a one-story than the two-story.
Right, makes some sense.
And not a flat roof.
Flat rubber roof, you don't want to do that?
No.
No, definitely not. I look at the two-story and I think that actually all that extra space, it feels kind of good because there's so many possibilities that are left over, but to be realistic, we're not talking about any of those possibilities, so probably stays empty for a very long time. That'd be disappointing, and kind of the same thing with the first, well, like a one-story building, you've got this whole possibility above us for a second floor and what can be put in, but once again, we haven't spent any real time and effort exploring what those options would look like, and I just don't see them happening in the near future.
Save that for a city council 25 years down the line.
I think so, yeah. I think we can do a real good job with a one-story building and get the frontage handled and do it in an efficient way, and probably deal with moving a little different than they drew it, but- Cool. So how do we want to proceed? Should we all send some ideas to Mike, then Mike can compile and put them on, or do we want to keep talking about it now? It seems like we've all got some ideas about this. I certainly have a couple of, couple of thoughts.
Well, I think, as, you know, Mike brought up partner, if any space, I think that's a conversation the five of us or the group needs to have, is do we want to provide partner space? What is the benefit to us? What is the cost of it? Is there a way to really generate revenue? Are we doing it as a public service deal? I think that's a whole other discussion.
Here's, here's the conversations we've had with partners already, we'll keep you a part of the conversation, and we've done that, we've had a meet with our folks, and that the idea that we're offering the space at free or super discount now has more to do with the fact that we have it, and it was already built, and it was used for something else, and it's not anymore. It's not relevant to the idea of building brand-new building space and giving that for free to somebody else. So I think everybody- So I think everybody understands as partners that if they want to be in on the new building, they have to be in financially. And, and I don't know that we can chase that down in three weeks. So I think we kind of have to keep that door open. The other feedback we've given is with the EDA, we're much more open to them being able to access City Hall. So they could actually be included in the City Hall space with the other partners. Probably better if they didn't. So we want everybody to be able to access the chamber and use that space and maybe some public meeting rooms. But to have AEOA and, and any of our other partners that have had different hours than us and, and have different groups of people using them, it doesn't make as much sense for them to be back a house with us at City Hall. But EDA, it's a very good fit.
And financially already because of our partnership with the county, that's the whole basis of the EDA, right?
Yeah.
Well, and does that fit for twenty years down the road? You know, those are the things that we have to think about too. It can't just be, well, what works for the next five years? I don't want to pass it on to somebody else. And I say it, I lived through the hospital remodel project. I spent twenty-five years there, so I lived through a couple of them. And I know that every time you think you're planning for something, whether it's storage or whether electronic devices or everything else, you're going to miss the mark most of the time. But that's one of my goals too, is to say, what do we need to do to accommodate the next twenty-five years? Then it can become somebody else's problem as things change so quickly. But I want to be able to look forward to that.
Have we had the conversation with our current partners about their willingness to pay like a rent or lease or anything like that?
It hasn't been chased down to here's what we're going to charge you. Will you pay it? Here are the terms of the lease. The EDA, for instance, has increased their rent budget for twenty-twenty. And I think that is partially in anticipation of either they're not going to be here and they're going to have to pay somebody else real rent money. Or they're going to be a part of this and they need to start preparing for that, so.
Okay. Because, I mean, realistically, the cost of, of building a building that has office space that we're going to rent out, you know, we're, we're talking at, you know, a twenty-five, thirty-year payback on that, on that space, meaning for the cost of construction. And well, we can charge for, for rent on that. So that's, that's, that's something that, that we have to certainly make up our minds about if that's the kind of partnerships that we want to have and the length of partnerships we want to have.
So that we can work on. Location, do we know that we want to be here? I think it makes sense.
I think they make a pretty compelling argument for being here.
So I think that's easy.
I'm not totally, totally, not, not totally, ninety, ninety percent maybe. Closer than I was.
I would say leaning towards, are we, we're leaning toward, more towards one story versus two? I mean, it seems like there's been a couple of people that have said.
I don't think you need to decide that today.
No, we need to give them ideas.
Yeah, I think we know we want restroom access of common lobby area.
I'm a fan of the public lobby concept. I mean, at first, when you showed a big public lobby like that, I thought, God, it's just dead space. But then when you talk about the different connections that it can provide, you know, maybe a backdoor of liquor store, having a, you know, a, a filter in and out area for, for the, for the chambers and things like that. You know, then it becomes a much more useful space that, that has a real purpose, especially in a public building.
I'm not sure how that works yet. I really want to see more about that. The, all of those, the three uses here, the City Hall, the liquor store, the public restrooms have their own particular audiences that they're trying to welcome. And they're not necessarily the same people at the same time. As a matter of fact, I suspect they're often not. And, and when we don't have access to those outdoor bathrooms and, you know, they're, they're sporadically very, very busy, that's very disruptive in City Hall. So the idea that we would want to have the same entrance for the public restrooms in City Hall, I don't think it works very well. And, and the same with the liquor store. It's, it's not, it's hard for me to understand how that works together yet. I can see the idea that you want to kind of get those to be the same audiences, but I don't know how that's done. And I really want to see some more on that before I can be sure.
I would agree with that.
I'm still, I, I, I actually just think like some shifting around the things on the two-story. I, it seems like every, you know, I don't know, during the Highway sixty-one project, it was like we're cutting parking and we're actually creating more parking in the news on the highway project. But that was like the response that, that seemed like there wasn't a parking, right? I think, I don't know, I, I think in the two-story concept that was there, I feel like there's a couple of things that could be like flipped or tweaked a little bit. And, you know, obviously there's no scale on that. You guys have some sense of scale, I'm sure. But like staring at this and looking at half a city block, it's hard to define those spaces. But, so I guess I'd be a little contrarian and say that I'm, not, we have to choose that right now. But I'm, I kind of like the idea of, of the two-story and the condensed. And I think visibility off the highway, having a two-story building. Again, we're going to have a taller retail level and being able to see sitting up at the stoplight or going through on the highway or even being able to potentially see it before you miss your turn down first to get there. I think there's a few things in the, like parking that would be defined for City Hall employees and staff compared to public parking and like access points. But I think like some of that, like you guys are smarter about this stuff than I am. But I think like some of that, like playing around with some of those things, like, I don't know, that's, that's where I'm at. Not that I think this is a bad idea either, because I think it just, I'd like a lot of what's happening here, but I feel like there's something within that two-story concept that could work both of those and provide what Mike was just saying with that access, those access points. I mean, that's the beauty of the two-story concept. You don't have people using the public restrooms and also.
Having City Hall.
City Hall, because it's stacked. So they'd have the lobby, which of course that's access to City Hall. But there's a little bit of.
It's not disruptive.
It's not disruptive. It's not the same. There's a separation between, so anyway.
What about operating costs, long-term energy efficiency? Is there any benefit to being two-story or footprint?
The boxier could be more energy efficient. The thing about this though is if you do one story, it's easier to put solar panels to kind of cover the energy costs that way. If that's an investment too, the broader, more roof area we have, the more we can control the volume.
More complicated for us with our electric utility relationships.
Yeah.
Take advantage of that.
Yeah. So I, I think, you know, the, a boxier building, you know, the less roof area, there are some energy advantages to that.
Do we answer, like, there was a list of stuff. So you want us to just give, kind of talk about that or work us through ourselves?
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, I, I think you guys, I, I would think that you need to talk through some of the stuff a bit. But it's the one to two-story. And again, it's not, you don't have to say necessarily, you know, one-story, two-story. If you can, that's great. But if you just say, you know, we're really, we're really leaning towards one, but we have some things about two we'd like you to explore. We can do that. How the toilet rooms, you know, whether it's shared or, or you want separate ones. Impact on parking, you know, do you, is it cool to, to keep that way as the partner space? It looks like the current location, we kind of seem, that's one of the six that seems to be something that we've.
We'll keep working on one of you.
So, so that's it. I think just the feedback and you'll have copies of this so you can kind of look at it and, and think it through. But again, these are just two of probably multiple ones that we'll end up coming up with. And I'll, I would guarantee you that if you said, we love this one, do it exactly like that. Once we really get into it, we're going to come back with eh, this doesn't really work or we found a new way that's better. And so it's just, it's just part of the process. So. So kind of shoot away and give us your thoughts. And then we'll, you know, kind of chew on it and come back with here's what we heard. Here's how we think we can solve some of the issues that we see and that you've brought up.
And I think sometimes when we're at this stage, it's almost more important if there's a, if there's something that's an absolute deal killer for you, that's the most important thing for us to hear sooner. Because we're going to keep exploring one versus two stories, because we don't even know what the best recommendation is for you right now. Because we're still kind of working through that. But if you said, I don't even want you to think about two stories, well, that would make it something. But, but I think the, the one is this whole toilet issue, you know, and Mike just hit on, I think, the real issues, right? Do you, is there a scenario, did you say, don't even, we don't want to see another scheme where you have a public lobby that's got those public, you know, those toilets in it? If you feel strongly about that, and we just didn't know until we walked into this room, if there's any kind of feeling about that. If you think the scenario you have right now is, you know, you don't want to change that, that's important for us to know. It seems like, based on what I'm hearing, that there's room to just show, try a few things here, just see what it feels like. And that relationship, again, the idea of pushing them closer to the liquor store, but, but respecting all of those, you know, the fact that you don't want a hundred people walking in to use the restrooms while you have an important meeting going on and that would, or, or you have a, you know, staff for being disrupted constantly, whatever. Those are all the things that we'd have to try and manage in that. And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we had a scenario that has those public restrooms in, like just using that one, that pass-through lobby idea where you would keep that, that could be open beyond the hours of City Hall. But then I think the real question is, do you want someone coming in there at three in the morning? You know, like what are you, how are you managing those today? And is it necessary to provide a restroom for someone at three in the morning? That those are the kind of questions I think you might start thinking about.
Because these work better if you add eleven o'clock or twelve, whatever, the things automatically lock, which nowadays with the, you know, with the technology, they can happen. And they can open at six in the morning before anyone even gets here. So fishermen and that type of stuff can.
Probably five if you're trying to help fish on it. But, you know, I'm just saying.
Or donut shopgoers.
Respect the early morning folks.
Yeah.
So you can keep sending me feedback, which I'll pass on to them. If you think there's an issue you want to discuss and you want to do it before they get too far down the road, we're going to need to schedule some more time. And it's, I think it's very possible that some of those issues that require discussion don't need to be solved right now. And that we can just put it on a future agenda, get some good concepts. And then if we need to add more space for partners, I don't think that's a huge deal breaker from the drawings we're going to get from them.
No.
We're not, you're not designing, you know, an actual building that's going to be built.
Yeah. The, the two-story scheme gets more complicated to just add space in terms of, because how things stack and emergency exits that we still have to get out. So it is a more complicated one. I mean, we can, we'll figure it out. But it, it's not a one-story one to all of a sudden come to us and of two months ago, you know what? We want to add two thousand square feet. Is it a little bit easier than saying, how do you add another two thousand square feet onto the two-story scheme?
Well, maybe that's worth us spending a little time next week chasing down the details of how you are going to include those partners and having some more direct conversations with them.
Okay.
Could you, is it possible to, just so we can wrap our heads around it too, as we're trying to look at how those spaces are broken out? We know what the lot size is. We can find that out easy enough off the county website. But can, can you, and I know those are all, I understand it's massing.
List the assumptions of the space where footage is.
Assumptions of the space where footage is.
Yeah, we could do that. That, that we can do right away.
As, as, you know, if these are what we're kind of looking at as we talk about things, so we can try and understand how that relates. Because again, not understanding exactly what the orange space at City Hall is right now. And it seems like many conversations we've had about what is existing at City Hall, that might be, again, access points, emergency exits, those things. But maybe there's already space within that, both in the one-story and the two-story concept, that the orange block for City Hall is actually, there's plenty of room for everything. Or maybe there's not.
I can say for sure that with what we told him initially, it's conservative and a very high end in the amount of space that we might use. If we needed to exist in a much smaller space than that, I know we could.
Sure.
So.
But I think we can do something pretty quickly, just to give you a, just a quick glimpse of that.
Just real rough, just so we can, or if those numbers that were given by, I mean, by staff.
Well, we'll.
Whatever's easiest for you.
Yeah, there, what, what we'll do very quickly is these spaces, which are based on programmatic stuff, we have some backup for these already. I would like it to run through one more kind of iteration and get, and then we can have that conversation, get that back to you. Because, you know, my mind, some of the number of offices, things that we had talked about, I'd like to kind of massage that just a little bit. So, because this really is really high, really fast. I'd like to have a little bit more kind of thought process to make sure that we aren't taking on an unnecessary detour.
Sure.
Okay. Very good.
Good.
Anything else? All right, so we've got our marching orders for this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is council discussion regarding trees that were, the Highway sixty-one trees. So for this, you know, Craig, you're the guy, you brought this up as something that we need to talk more about. I'm wondering if you would be willing to, to take a lead on, on leading conversation. If you have concerns or something that you want to bring up or, or however you want to, you want to process that. I think that's the best way to start, so.
Well, my concerns, the reason why I wanted this on the agenda is simply because we had a meeting. You were at it and I was at it, but when the state was out. And there seemed to be a lot of questions still in people's minds about the process and the reason why and, and, and all that. And I just felt that it would be necessary to give people an opportunity to voice their opinions and we can discuss it. I think it would have been critical, critically wrong if we would just ignored it and waited till the trees hit the dirt sometime in November, because then we're going to hear about it. And then you guys are going, we're all going to have to deal with a reality that maybe this might be better to have a discussion about it. And I don't know where this is going to go. When I said that last month, I said, I don't know where this conversation is going to go. But we heard a lot of people offer a lot of suggestions. I don't know if those can be chased, if they can be discussed with the state or whether we even want to. But they're on the table for discussion. And I think it's important that we discuss it. I mean, you know, I, I just, it seems kind of. I still struggle with stuff that's going on between me and the state and my business. And that's, and a lot of that is because of, I feel, the last meeting we had with the state when the engineers came up here, and that was the last meeting, we saw the, another drawing of the highway, a different drawing. We then were told about an MPCA dig. We were told about a highway getting closed down. And, you know, you got to remember, all this happened at the end of this timeline, you know? I was, I was told highway would never be closed down. I was told we'd always have a lane of traffic open during this project. And so, and a lot of other business people knew that too. But that ended at that meeting. And we didn't really have much rebuttal or input or why. You know, and even to tell you the truth, at that meeting, I didn't know we were cutting trees down, which ones are going down. I didn't know. So, I mean, I just think that through the course of this project, there was many meetings, many opportunities for people to come and listen and voice their concern, voice their opinion. Personally, myself, I felt that I didn't get all the information that I probably should have got during this project, process. And I don't know if it was neglect by the city, a change of a supervisor that I just found out that the state had done or, or the state's neglect of educating us as business people. You know, so I'm still slightly confused about why we're here now. I don't think at this point, since a contractor's been awarded a bid, we've written a check. It just, it just seems, you know, obviously there was a problem, a mistake or something to be why we're here. And I'm not going to blame it on the fact that everybody comes out of the woodwork when something's going to happen. Yeah, that does happen in, in Grand Marais and I understand that. But. But, but it's, it's, it's just an idea of maybe something got dropped or failed along the passage of this project. And I think that's why we're sitting here. Otherwise, we, we shouldn't be, this shouldn't be an issue, but it is. Right now. I, I don't, I just think people talk, they gave opinions, they gave information. You know, there's questions that obviously we can't answer. We're at the state level now with all this thing, with this, so I mean, it's just gonna be, have to be something that, we talk about. I have many questions about the MPCA dig. That store, that station closed 22 years ago. There was no need to remediate that property at that time. Why wasn't there? That's a big question I have to the MPCA. We're doing it now. Why didn't they do it from now back 22 years? You know, and, and that's why we're closing down the highway. So economically, nobody did an impact study. That bothers me. I know it's been a, you know, you heard it a hundred times, but why wasn't there an economic impact study done on this thing? It affects neighborhoods, it affects frickin' employees that I may not have to have next summer, or you may not have to have, or businesses. I mean, it affects, it affects payroll, it affects everything. Business volume. It's a huge project, and it's, we're not gonna go through this without some hurt, you know, some, some issues. That's just my opinion. And, you know, I, I, I can't say what we can and cannot do with the trees, because I don't know. Reroute the bike path, narrow the bike path, I don't know, they're in the way of the bike path. So I mean, what are you gonna do? You gotta decide as a city council, if you're willing to ask some questions of the state. Because we can't really do anything until we talk to the state, I, I think, along the lines of this right now, where we're at. Anybody else wants to talk about it, go ahead. That's how I feel.
Okay.
Do we know in the, like at what, which one of those meetings that the, because in the planning process, when we had all the public comment and all those things, like which has been, I mean, it's been more than three years, it's been six years since it started. And, and I don't mean that in any way, except for that it has been like a long, ongoing process. But when, you know, we, we heard about, like Craig said, the full closure now, and because of the MPCA dig, right, the big dig, or whatever they're calling it. Like when did, was that more an opportunity that presented itself because the highway was being done and the MPCA jumped on that?
Do we, and the. I, I think that's a reasonable way to describe it, but honestly, to answer for the MPC's decision-making is pretty impossible.
Yeah.
They, they've been poking holes downtown. I moved here in 2001, and it's been steady business since then. So, for the longest time, I, they kept doing explorations and finding things, and it didn't seem like they were ever gonna do anything about it. And that, that's troubling, but, but at least we kind of knew that's just a exercise to keep well drillers involved in our community more than making any actual long-term plans. Now they're coming and have a long-term plan, so I think that's a positive step.
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I can't, I've never seen what's in there. I've never, have we ever been presented the information of what's in the MPC, like what, I mean, again, not that I could probably comprehend what that is anyways, I'm not a.
No, no, I'm with you there. They've, they've shown us drawings that show where they think the plume is, based on the data they've collected.
And that's why these, these areas kind of are where they are.
Yeah.
We've, we've asked for MPCA to come, talk to the council years past, and it's, it's never happened. There's, there have been requests for additional wells, even on city property. And we've questioned why additional wells, when there doesn't seem to be a plan for any remediation or solution or addressing why the need for more, more wells. And this is, as Mike says, it's been going on for a long time. Even when the city did the downtown street project, you know, there were, you know, parts of that project that excavated contaminated soils. And we did clean up contaminated soils at the time we were putting the sewer water lines. I think it all makes sense that if they know that there's contaminated soils under the area that they're gonna be working in, that they remove those soils and do the remediation, you know, when, when that's exposed. But, but again, we've, we've had no, no report or no information with regard to, to the levels of contamination or what's going on there that spells out to us what, what the reason is.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on, on that.
Are there any wells in that immediate area that are not being monitored anymore? But are still there? Does anybody know that?
I don't think we would know.
Okay.
There, there have been a number.
Somebody called me today and said there were wells that aren't being monitored anymore.
There are a lot, there are a lot of wells in the downtown.
Because they're not getting enough evidence of contamination. So I, I just think that if we don't know the answers to that, then I think we should have somebody from the MPC provide us information. If they have wells that they don't need here, then why are they here? I, I mean, at some point in time, you remove them, I would think. Or you clean up the site.
In the alley behind the Legion, there's four wells within 15 feet
Right.
that they drilled, put in one after another.
Right.
And abandoned one and put in a new one. And, I mean, what's the rhyme or reason to that? You know, I've never had an explanation to that in I own property.
Would it be because there was a former gas station there?
But why four wells within 15 feet, you know, made no sense.
Seems pretty fine-grained. Monitor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just. And there's money involved. There's a lot of money involved. I'm sure there's super fund money being used for this dig. And when they disrupt and tear up the highway and the sidewalks and the curbing and the gutter, super fund money will be used to replace that. Okay? Won't be budgeted.
I don't think that's true.
Well, I'm gonna check it out, because obviously, super fund money is being used.
I'm not sure that this is a super fund.
So the MPC is doing this cleanup and not using super fund money?
They have a fund called Petrofund that they use to clean up contaminated soils.
And that's not money from the.
Super funds.
It's not money from the two cents you pay on every gallon of gas and stuff.
That's Petrofund, yeah.
That's Petrofund, well then, that's what it is.
And, and they don't pay for the highway project. That's being done already, so.
No, I'm not saying they're paying for the highway project. But if they destroy a surface area, don't they have to replace it and return it to its?
They, so think about the parking lot behind Harbor Inn, for instance, that's also gonna be dug up. The MPC will be responsible for restoring that. But the things that Mindot's building in the, in the right of way, the MPC is not gonna be responsible for restoring that. That, that's why they're doing it at the same time.
So, well, Mike, the question has been asked, you know, why can't we put off doing this? I mean, first of all, it's, we know that this is a state project, it's not our project. You know, we're, we're a partner to it, because we have city utility work that's gonna be done as part of this project. And there's also improvements to the, outside of the road surface that we've wanted to be included in this project. They're all, they've all been part of the, the bid, and that's been awarded. What, where are we in this process that allows us to go in and ask for any alterations?
Well, we're asking for clarification on that right now, in regards to your conversation you had at your last meeting. Okay, now, there's some things in the bid that we're not comfortable with, and we need more information on. We may potentially want to ask for changes on it. So I'll be sitting down with them next week to get some better feedback about that. It's complicated to ask for changes at this point, but.
The trees are in the Mindot right of way, is that correct?
Yeah.
All of them?
Yes.
Okay. So if there is change orders put in place, and I know it's complicated, but I'm gonna say, we're gonna do it. We make the resolve that we want to save the trees, change orders have to occur. If we are requesting those change orders, would the expenses that are then incurred fall back to the city of Grand Ray?
I think that's a reasonable assumption to make.
And our taxpayers?
We'll raise the money privately.
I can't live, and I don't want to get into a conversation, but the majority of people who have contacted me, and that's not to say that citizens aren't, I'm hearing from, from the county. And I don't say that to dismiss county residents, because this is home and the hub to all of us. But what I'm concerned about, and what I'm supposed to be responsible for, is that the people living within the city paying tax dollars, if another increase were to come on top yet, we then have to go back and explain that to them. So that's why I have the question about that. Because we're already paying substantially more than we had hoped. So that's, that's part of my concern. Saving the trees, I'm, you know, I go back to the conversation that Afa had as well. And what he said, I'm sure people noticed that I have tears. He's, he's come to two meetings and spoken very eloquently. He also speaks to matters of my heart. Trees are obviously a matter of the heart to people that are sitting in this room. But the young people and what is going to be down the road also speaks to my heart. I have watched so many children move away and not come back. They can't find homes, they can't find jobs. When I'm looking at some of the facts that were presented tonight in here about what median incomes are, and it's $45,000, that medium income is not buying a home. And just so people understand, because people talk about the they's and the me's, about who's lived here the longest or who has more history. I struggle with that, because we all are here for whatever reason that pulled us here. For me, it's family roots back to the late 1800s. Because my name is not recognizable doesn't mean I'm not local. But what I've, I've told people before, being a local only means that I might have some more history that people have passed on to me. I know people have been here forever, and I consider you citizens. I worked with Joe at Harbor Light, and I was 19 years old, and Mary. Jim used to work across the street and come in for lunch. We're all neighbors in this. And the decisions that we make are really hard to do. And I'm trying to figure out, if it's as simple as saving the trees, I'll check the box tomorrow to do that. But there's so much that I don't know that we can do. And the, the change order piece is what scares me, because I have to turn around and tell the people living in the city, potentially, that we can do this, but it might cost a million more, two million more, three million more, 100,000 more. And I don't know where the value is to people. And I know you say, we could, maybe we could raise it. I look at what a business did, but I would like to find out. I just know when you deal with those bigger entities, there isn't a clear answer. So I, you know, if they're in Mindot's right of way, I don't know how much we can fight. I'm happy to ask if we could wait a year. I have no issue with that. As far as change orders and getting rid of a bike path or this or that or MPCA. And I know the process is probably not what everybody would like it to be. But in dealing with government, I don't think there's ever a perfect process. And I do think people have really tried hard. I will admit, I don't pay much attention to anything, and I never paid attention to the Highway 61 project whatsoever, until I thought I might put my name in for council. And then I thought, maybe I should attend a meeting just to see what it's about. Because if it's not in your wheelhouse, or it's not something you're interested, you kind of tend to look by it until something, a tree, a sidewalk, a recreational area, something sparks your interest, because it's something personal to you. So I hope that people know, I believe every one of us here is trying to do the right thing. But it may be different from everybody's ideas. And that we're respectful and that we're responsible is my biggest hope, and that we're good neighbors. I really want to do that. I was so disheartened to hear, and I'm gonna say it, Jay, that if really truly people are threatening you or telling you to pack up and get out, that's not being a good neighbor. It's okay that we disagree, but you're still gonna be my neighbor. Doesn't mean I have to talk to you every day, and it doesn't mean I have to say hi or whatever, but you're still my neighbor, and I will treat you with respect as long as you do that to me. So I'd like to know what, if anything, we can do here tonight to explore. That's more my question. They're in the Mindot right of way. That kind of tells me something right away. Can we try to delay that? Does anybody know that question? Or that answer? I'm sorry.
I think that would be, that would be something that we would have to ask, you know, very directed to, to Mindot to see what they do. Because at this point, there's, there's two layers on this, from what my understanding of it is. And given my understanding of this is probably relatively limited, is that, is that the bids have already been awarded to the company, to KGM. So KGM is expecting to do a certain scope of work. They've already, you know, they, they expect that.
Right.
So the agency that makes those official change off orders for, you know, and puts those in front of KGM for them to consider would be Mindot at this point. And that would be, you know, I think, I understand, I mean, the way I understand it, I think that's the, the way the process runs at this point of the, of the situation. And, and, and I would like to say too, for the record, that I, I think that, that the way that Mindot does their agreements and their partnerships with, with communities and with cities, I believe to be absolutely ridiculous. And, and that's one of the things that, that I'm, I'm really interested in shaking some, shaking some stuff up with, with that, so to speak, because it, if, we're not the only example of a city that's kind of gotten steamrolled by, by Mindot, and, and it's.
No, but this is the, for lack of better words, this is a poker hand we're dealt. So my question is, how do we play it?
Well, getting back to something you touched on, and we had a very difficult decision here not too long ago, where the bids are open. And I don't know if you got a letter or a phone call, or whatever you got from DOT, but we had to make a decision on a particular night to spend a whole lot more money than we anticipated, than what our engineers anticipated, than what the state anticipated. 2.3 million versus 1 million. And it was like we were dealt a hand where we didn't have a choice. But I think back on that, and it bothers me that we're somewhat concerned, I understand change order's gonna cost money, we all know that. But I, I'm very, it bothers me that, that we didn't ask our, our voting public if we should go ahead and spend double on a project that we didn't anticipate spending on. And we're spending a lot of our, our, our money on this project. A cash, city cash, 2.3 million dollars. I don't know how that affects our bond rating. I don't know what that leaves in our coffers for future projects. And none of us here can predict what the cost overruns are gonna be on this project, but I'm pretty sure there's gonna be some cost overruns, some change orders. We might be able to save some money on a few things we're looking at within the sewer system. That might help a little bit. But it's still, you know, it was a shock to all of us to see that, 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 that amount of money. And my gut instinct was, I don't want to spend this right now. I want to like, take a hard look at this, rebid it, whatever. But then you're forced with the reality, well, the state's gonna come and do their project anyway. If you're not part of the deal, what's your choice? See, I don't think we had a choice. It wasn't a good choice that we had to make. I, I didn't feel comfortable. I still don't feel comfortable about it. And I feel like I'm ripping off people, because we're spending a crap load of more money here than, than educated engineers put together this thing. They engineered this with a million dollars in mind, you know. And why did it turn out to be 2.3 million? I don't know, but we're spending the money. And I feel really uncomfortable. We're in it. They signed a contract, this is where we are. So it's really upsetting to, to, to understand what you're talking about. Well, if there's a change order, taxpayers are gonna pay. Well, if there's a change order, taxpayers are gonna pay. Hey, they're paying right now. They're paying right now.
I know they are Craig, that's what I'm saying. I'm concerned about what more has to go back. And we had two bad choices. If we didn't get in on it now and pay the two point three, we could end up paying five down the road when something bad goes wrong.
The state makes eight percent off every dollar we spend, so they made eighty-nine thousand off of this.
I can't control the state.
So I'm just saying, we got a contract that is...
Yeah, I think we're, you know, we're...
Getting off the topic, but, but we, we have to understand that there's a concern here. And if we can do something about it, I think we should try to address it. If we can't do nothing about it, you know, I apologize for the situation we're in. I mean, I, you know, I didn't, I, I wasn't on this deal for the whole duration, wish I was, but I wasn't.
Well, I was, you know, I was here during the whole discussion. We started out with our conversations at the library where we invited the community, and we had a number of public meetings, and tried to get as many people to be participants.
We went to all the meetings.
We're in, we're in a situation that, you know, I think, you're right, we're not comfortable. We, we obviously are ending up paying for our utility work much more than we had ever anticipated paying for that. But the option was to not do that and know that we were gonna have to do that work at a later point, and likely was gonna cost us more because we'd be dealing with road, road reconstruction as well as our utility work. And, you know, that just didn't make sense that we would want to go down that path. I mean, we were, we were boxed in a corner, and it, it wasn't a very good feeling. But you're right, we didn't have a choice, utilities do need to be replaced, and we, we made that decision. I mean, I think what we're, we're, we're looking at here is really a, a, a complex project that one issue like the trees affects so many other parts of the project. And you can't isolate this from everything else without the dominoes starting to tumble in every direction. And here we are with the concern, and, and I recognize, you know, people's interest in wanting to, to, to keep these trees. We, we had this discussion, I think, probably early on with, with our landscape architect and the MINDOT landscape architect, talking about whether this was a possibility. And, you know, we were told that to, to fit the things in that want, that, that the community said that they wanted to see in that right of way wouldn't be possible without taking those trees. And that's where we are. And that's what the plan, you know, shows, and here we are today. The bids, bids have been let, and the contracts have been awarded. Now we're, we're trying to see if there's a way to backtrack. I don't know how we backtrack without the whole cart just falling apart. And I think that's the reality of this situation, is that if this conversation would have happened two years ago and bids, you know, the...
Can we, can we ask a question?
It was brought up, it was brought up a number of times Jim, and, and, and the fact was, is that nothing changed with the tur, with the terms of the improvements that were replaced in the right of way, because that was what the community said that they wanted to see in there. It wasn't the city deciding that those were the improvements, it was the community that decided these were the types of improvements they wanted to see in the right of way, based on needs for, for pedestrian safety, people getting, able to get from one end of the downtown to the other along the highway, with walking and strollers and with kids. And all of this came together, and here, this is the plan we have, and I mean...
Can we ask a question?
I think we're, I think we're, I think we're in a position where we, we are gonna have to carry through with, with what has been bid, because that's what's happened. I mean, I'm not willing to, to start throwing change orders out there to request that this all, all start to change. I, I mean, I'm not ready to do that. I, I just think that that would be a, a poor policy decision on the part of the city. The, the costs, the potential implications for that, I, I think are huge. And this is a project that is gonna be affecting the city for, and I've said this many times, for fifty years. This highway project is gonna be a fifty-year project. What we see out there isn't gonna change, you know. We're not gonna have any opportunity, MINDOT's not gonna come back, there, nobody's gonna be doing anything out in that right of way for the next fifty years, once it's established. Yeah, we're gonna plant a bunch of trees, it's gonna change in appearance, it's gonna look different, you know. That's, I think that's, I think that's what's gonna happen.
I think that was what the plan was. I mean, the, the visioning process that took place, starting at the library and moving to the Lutheran church and all that stuff. I mean, that's where that process moved through, you know. I mean, and there was, you know, I agree with you Tim.
There, I think that it's, it's important for us to, to keep in mind, like what Craig was saying before, what the, what the possibilities here are. There, there is a, a possibility that the city, you know, for the city to ask for, to ask for certain things having to do with those trees. But then we also have to keep in mind that, that when we make those, those asks, even if we make those asks in the complete right mindset and everything like that, that the decision-making process for those, for, for any of those requests has to clear, has to clear MINDOT and, and the contractor. Not, I'm not saying that, that that's a reason to not make those requests. I think that it, I think that it actually, after hearing the comments that people have, I think that it makes sense for us to, to have a conversation with MINDOT about, about timing, about how this works. As far as I'm concerned with the plan itself, I've, I've gone tree by tree through the plan, and the vast majority of, of those trees are trees that, like, we're, we're not just cutting trees down, you know, willy-nilly. Like, these, these trees have been, these things have been identified. When I dig a little bit deeper, because people say, ask me, well, like, why are we putting infrastructure there if that's going to be, if that's gonna cause these trees? So then I ask the question, why do we put infrastructure there? And the answer from MINDOT comes back, because this is where we put infrastructure. Well, can we put it anywhere else? No, we put it here because this is where we have to put it so that we can have the roadway meet the, the criteria that's set for the, for the state. I, the, the fact that, that the two big trees on the north side are not gonna be cut down, and that they're gonna be, like, their roots are gonna be treated, and that there's gonna be mitigation on those trees, like, that's due to the fact that, that we asked them to save as many of those trees as they could. And that, and there's, there's a water main that runs right adjacent to the, to the cobblestone tree. And, and those, those situations, you know, a lot of times, I get stuck. I mean, I really get stuck. But the, the one reassuring thing that I have, knowing that, that I plan to live here for a really long time, and that my son is, is gonna grow up in this town, and hopefully live here when he's, when he grows up, is that there'll be some kind of a, some kind of a, of a legacy of, of a wooded corridor coming. And that's, the, the, the hope for that generation is, is where I rest my hat.
I think, I think that, that, I took a lot of that from when people were speaking too. And I'm not, again, I don't think that anybody, there, anybody, they're objective to try and take out the trees. But I think that, like, when I, where I went to college, there was a F-five tornado that took out the town. And it was a four-lane highway going through town, and the trees were big enough to like, you drove through a tunnel of trees, like, they were huge. And that was twenty years ago. And, you know, there was conversations or comments made about, like, you put these sticks in the ground and nothing's gonna happen, they're not gonna do anything. Well, I can tell you that twenty years later, that you go through that town, and there isn't the canopy, but that takes a hundred-plus years, right? And, and the fact is though, is that, like, things were replanted and things were redone, and things, there was regrowth. And there is that feeling and that sensation that, you know, maybe not on the same grandeur, but you don't notice the starkness, right? I mean, and that isn't, you know, that's, that's twenty years, that's not that long. And, I mean, I guess that's, and, and we're not saying, okay, if we take seven trees, nine trees, eleven trees, we're gonna plant seven, nine, eleven. I mean, we're going tenfold plus, you know, of impacts to what is happening with what's proposed in the project. Again, I'm not, you know, I completely agree with what Craig said and feeling like, and, and Tim too, that we're... I feel, it was in our, I mean, we talked about this last meeting. Like, it's just like, what the hell, what, what the hell are we supposed to do? Like, I, I feel really stuck by the situation that, the arrangement with MINDOT, how that's worked. I know that, you know, three years ago, when we were having troubles trying to get, I mean, MINDOT was the one, after we did this visioning process, that said, hey, you know what, we want to move this project up in our line because of the work that the, your community has done, right? That's what I remember. And because of the work that we did. And then, we're like, great, all right. And then there was this butting heads with the engineer, who basically all, the reason they bumped us up in the schedule is because they liked the, what we proposed, then they weren't accepting any of the proposals that we were trying to do. And, you know, I credit MINDOT with getting a different person in there that was willing to fight for, really, the community's voice to be heard on that project, on the project.
That was really just us.
And, well, I mean, right, I mean, us, but like, I mean, me and us fighting for it?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think that MINDOT would have...
Well, they replaced, well, but anyways, they, but they got the right person in there. What I'm saying is, they got the right person in there. And so, since that's happened, and we've obviously gotten, you know, we're, we're signing things that we need to do for them to have access, we're in a consent agreement, we're doing, you know, like, here's what this is gonna cost, and this is how we're gonna pay for it. And, you know, and then last meeting, getting these numbers back, or it was before that, but really being able to dive into them last meeting, I think every single one of us felt like we're in the spot where now, we, because we signed this, like, the project's moving along, short of stopping our share of it, the utility side of it. I mean, that doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense. It makes sense right now if we're trying to save our tail. But if you're trying to look for the future, and you're trying to look for my kids and my kids' kids, you know, if you're trying to look for that, then that's what, that's what the decision needs to be made on. And it doesn't mean that, like, it's not sad that because of this, trees are gonna be lost. But if, to me, if the groundwater and the contaminated soils, if this project, that they're waiting for this window to be able to happen, and this is gonna happen, like, that can happen, that's fixed. And we're replacing, and we're planting, intentionally planting a hundred and forty trees. Like, and we're making it so you can actually get out of your car east of Fifth Avenue, Sixth Avenue West, and walk on the south side of the highway without having to walk in the highway with your kid, if you're going down somewhere by North House or by the rec park, because there's actually gonna be a sidewalk there. Like, absolutely, absolutely I'm for it. I'm for changing that, and I'm for making it so that you can actually walk around this town. If you live in this town and you don't drive around this town, if you live in this town and you walk around this town, it is not conducive right now to do that. And so many of the things, not just this project, but our, the different projects that we've been working on and trying to get things going, it's about this mobility, and it's about, you know, I don't, I just, I, I don't, I don't, I don't feel like it's, I feel like we're stuck in a corner, but I also don't think, like, I feel good sacrificing what I see as a very strong project with a project, a positive, very positive outcome, based on what our goals were for long-term because of trees that aren't even on our property. And I'm not saying that I want to cut the trees down, but what I'm saying is, if you look, if you do look, right? If you look long-term, if you look, you don't, you know, you look, you look at my kids, their kids, you look beyond our lifestyle, our lifetime. Like, I, I just think it's the, fixing our water pipes, I mean, that saves taxpayer money, right? Safety, ability to move around, I'm, like, I guess that's where I'm at.
Do you have anything else?
No, I just, my, my biggest, my biggest issue is the impact on businesses. I don't think anybody has a clue, and I think it's gonna be substantial. And it's not gonna be one year, it's gonna be two. And I'm, I'm, you know, I've had three business people come up and ask me what I thought. One just established a new business downtown, he may be leaving. Another one has a business downtown, he may be closing his doors, anticipating what he may run into next summer. We don't know, it's, it's an unknown, of course, but I think it's gonna be financially pretty extreme when you don't have any traffic going through town anymore. You buy, you know, we had a talk about this, and I don't know if anybody remembers this, but we were gonna put signs up at the top of the streets directing people down to the businesses so they could get to them. But now we're bypassing all the traffic up to the Gunflown Trail and out to Highway sixty-one. You know, and, and, and that's because a business along Seven didn't want the traffic going by their business. And it would be, that's the YMCA, you know, they're, they're a neighbor of ours, we contribute a lot of money to. And I think to be a good neighbor, they should probably take a little different look at the perspective of the fact that a lot of businesses maybe anticipated maybe getting some traffic from that bypass traffic that's gonna go up Eighth Avenue. Not all the traffic can go through Wisconsin Street all summer long, it can't happen. It's gonna have to go up Eighth, it's gonna have to go out of town, come back into town, or go into Bay. But, I mean, I, I, we had a meeting about this. The, the downtown coalition talked about how to advertise, creative ways to advertise, that went away. So there's a lot of aspects of this project that is gonna hurt business. If I didn't own a business, I wouldn't be talking like this, but I gotta speak for the business people. And let's face it, a lot of them who have businesses in this town can't vote, they don't live in town, they live in the county. That's why they don't come here, they know their vote doesn't mean anything. Their voice might, but their vote means nothing. And they know it, that's why they're not here. But they talk about it. So I think our ears should open up a little bit. I'm just saying, I, I feel that's important.
I don't think it's...
Well, it, it's not a, it's, that's not a new problem. I mean, do you think every person that owns a business in Duluth lives in Duluth city limits?
No, they don't.
I mean, that doesn't happen, so we're not...
It's a problem when you come to meetings and you suggest things and nobody listens. That's a problem, Kelly. I've been suggesting things on this highway project for three years, you know why...
So as a city councillor, what do you think we can do about this? What is your suggestion?
Right now?
Yes.
I don't, I mean, I, I, you have to talk to the state, we know that. If you think you want to talk to the state and postpone cutting the trees, eventually you're gonna get cut, obviously, from what I, I listened to Tim and Anton, I mean, and the state. You know, their stuff in state right of way, it's been there for seventy years. Buck's signs have been in state right of way for seventy years, and now it's getting moved.
Because they have that right.
They had that right for seventy years. This highway project gave them the ability to change the scope of everything that we orientated our businesses to the highway, and now they want to change the orientation, and it's very difficult. So I mean, it's a big, huge economic pill to swallow. And it's not just about the trees, it's about all kinds of stuff.
Well, the highway, the highway project is not gonna go away, so we, we have, have to deal with it. And that's the situation we're in, I mean, whether it's the economic...
Well, it started out, Tim, as being a resurfacing, that's how it started out.
Again, as a city councillor, I gotta go back to how...
Regardless, we, we are where we are today.
I don't, I don't, I know where we are. I know where we are.
We didn't just, we didn't, the project didn't just come from resurfacing and then, then like magic...
It morphed into what we have.
It's, it morphed that way because we, because we heard from people in the community for an extended period of time, in an iterative process, that, that got us to a point of, of design. So that's, so that's, I mean, that's something that we have to keep in mind as well. Understanding that, that some of us weren't on the, on the council when this whole thing started, there is, there is a level of, of, of inherent knowledge that, that went into this... there is, there is a level of, of, of inherent knowledge that, that went into this project, you know, that got us to the point that we're at, like, we weren't just making shit up. There's things that, that went into this project that were very strongly called for, um, through the community engagement. As far as, as far as, as the, the impacts of, of this on the community, um...
There's nothing in the project that dealt with economic impact, zero.
Right.
Zero.
What do we do about the trees?
I feel like, I feel like, okay, so, so here's something that, that I'm willing to do, and something that I can do. So, the connection that we have with MINDOT right now, Michael Cullum Beck is the number one guy that we talk to. And I am willing to call Michael Cullum Beck tomorrow, and I'm willing to, to have a very real, frank conversation with him about the seventeen people that came and talked, um, at the meeting tonight.
And emailed.
And, and the emails that we received, and say, you know, this is what we're hearing. Let's talk about what, you know, what we can do about this, as far as delaying the cutting, as far as, as any, any, anything that, that comes up for possibilities here. I can, I can do that, I'm willing to do that. And then, and then I can bring that report back to the next, to the next meeting, or else I can talk to, to Mike and have that, have that information, that information sent out to you from what I, from what I find out. If that works for, for everyone, then I will, I will commit to do that. I will do that with, with, with like, whatever I can do to make that as, as, as honest and as, as straightforward as, as possible.
I'm in favor of that. I think that the least we can do is try to meet people's requests that I will consider reasonable. I believe it will be a year delay that would be what might be reasonable. I don't think we're gonna save the trees, I, I don't. In all honesty, I grew up here, moved away, came back, I had to drive by tonight and count the trees, because I really couldn't tell you how many were there. I don't look every day. But again, it depends upon where your passion lies. Because your passion's different than mine doesn't make you right or me wrong, or me right or you wrong. But I'm willing to support that we would like to look at delaying for a year, if possible, with the realization that I believe they will come down. I don't think the final, like you said, it's up to MINDOT, and it's up to KGM. But I think it's worth the ask. It would make a lot of people really happy, and I'm willing to at least ask the question, because that's what people are telling us they really want. So if we don't ask the question, we can't ever get an answer. I don't disregard the work that's gone into this at all. I know, I remember hearing about meetings at the library and the Lutheran church, I do. And I went, eh. That's on me. That's not on the city, that's not on the state, it's not on anybody else. I saw it in the paper, I read things, I heard things, people did talk about things. I chose to go, eh. Just like people tonight chose to come and voice their opinion. It could be too late, but you said your piece. Once the answer comes down, we have to move on. And I go back again to what he said tonight. We have a lot of things in this community happening and going on that we're missing the mark on, and I hope people will be impassioned by what he talked about, because we have people leaving here that can't find places to live, can't have homes, and be with their families. That's a bigger problem to me, no offense, than a tree, but I'm willing to look at it, at least to meet the needs of the people.
Right.
So, I think it's the right thing to do.
Does anyone have any other thoughts about, about my offer? Does anybody have any other strategies that we could, that we could do, I feel like?
Well, I, I think it's, I mean, I think it's great if you wanna call and do that, but I think, like, ultimately, delaying them for a year, if the, if you're gonna make that call, then the question would, to me, if you're gonna make that call to ask about saving them for a year, it shouldn't be about calling to ask to save them for a year to find out, like, what is, if, if, if there's, like, is there, like, what, what is the... Maybe it's already been done.
Well, if we have the same conversation a year from now, we're, we're...
That's what I'm saying, so don't, don't call and, don't call and ask him to, don't call and ask him to save them for a year. Call and say, okay, here's what we had when these people showed up. What does this mean? What does this mean if we try and...
Michael can't answer that question for you.
No, he can't.
He did tell us, we have it in writing. Please let me say one thing for clarification for you.
Mike cannot tell you, he wants you to tell him.
Can you email it to him?
What are the design features? You already did.
Right.
Eighteen months ago, you signed off on it. If you're, if you're thinking you wanna change what the design features are that you want, you really have to go back to reflect on the process that created the design that you've already agreed to.
Yeah.
And are you willing to change that? And then, if you are, you can't ask Michael to do it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not willing to do that. I think we've gone through this process. I think this is where we are today, and this is the state we're in. We have to make a decision, are we in, are we out? And, you know, I think we're in because we've invested five years of time, we've had community meetings, we've had public involvement, we've gone through everything, and yes, the trees are not part of the plan. Sad to see him go, but...
The only question I have, the only question I have about the trees currently, where they sit right now, if they narrow the highway up five feet, they're further away from the highway than they are right now. Uh, it just depends on how wide, your, your path is eleven feet, that's substantially wider than the sidewalk that's there right now. So, is it a huge design change to perhaps have a narrower path? And one block stretch to save, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not saying to just upset the cart and let's redesign this whole thing, but maybe that's one little section that maybe could be looked at? That's not gonna be huge money.
Are you talking about the south side between, like...
Well, from the Jabba Moose to the Dairy Queen, I'm just saying, you know, you gotta, you already got a sidewalk there, you already got curb there, you already got trees there.
But you also have to cut...
You gotta understand, this highway's getting five feet narrower on both sides.
But you're digging ten thousand square cubic yards of material.
Well, it depends, I know that, but I didn't know that was going under through the trees all the way to the harbor end. See, that's what I don't understand. So, I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not telling you what to do or making a decision, I'm just...
And I'm not telling you what the design...
I'm just voicing things here.
I'm totally with you, Greg.
If you want to reconsider it, you can't ask MINDOT to do that for you.
No, I know that.
They're gonna ask you to do it.
Right.
Well, and we've already done that. I think we've already gone through these tough, uh, had these tough questions presented to us, and we've responded, and this is, the, the plan we have is, is our response. I mean, I don't know that, how we go back and say, now can we reassess these, the, the impact of, whether it's the bike path, or a sidewalk, or the, the road width, or anything. I mean, like I said before, it's dominos, you start to move one, and everything else shifts. And there's, there's, you know, too many implications at this point in this process to start to, start this whole thing all over again. You know, I think we're, we're, where we're at, and it's, it's gonna go forward the way it is. I mean, that's my, my opinion, I mean, yes, unfortunately, the trees are, are not part of the plan.
Well, there's a lot of things that are not part of the plan, too.
Right.
That's, that's, that's the sad part of this project, in my opinion.
So, we're not making a motion to change any plan, right? You're just saying you're gonna get information?
I need to, I need to give...
I think it's worth clarifying the question that you tend to ask. If you just wanna ask, what will it take to delay cutting those trees for a year? That's a fairly simple question for them to answer.
Yeah.
If you're gonna ask, is there any chance we're not gonna cut these trees down? They're not gonna be able to answer that for you. You're gonna need to get involved with your own resources to think about redesigning it, and you have to ask yourselves if that's what you're interested in doing or not.
I'm not interested in redesign, but I'm interested because people have asked if we could save them for a year. I'm willing to do that, I'm not interested in redesigning.
Alright.
Can he just speak, so we can have less tension in the room?
Jay, could I, could I just give you a point, just a point of information? I won't pontificate, I promise.
I don't trust you, but, I mean...
Well, I have trust issues too. So, can I, could I just please just give you a point of clarification that might help you think about it a little bit more? We've asked MINDOT, we've asked Colm Buck, we have written responses from him on the idea of delaying, and on the idea of how one can possibly move that water line to save the cobblestone out. Those are things that we've talked to and have written answers that I would provide you for. All we're asking is that you just delay this for a year, since it doesn't have to be cut now, because there's another thing that a lot of citizens would like to know. We just would like to know what other trees. I was informed today, now, we never knew it, that the giant oak...
Okay, that's beyond, that's beyond.
Pontificating, Jim. No, but I'm, no, but I'm just saying, the maple, we were told the maple, the point is that we don't know all what's being cut. We were told those giant maples just beyond there are also being cut.
Well, I will, okay, let's, let's go back to what we're... Provide me the information, Jim, provide me the information. Provide me the information, Jim, please. That's the only thing that we need to talk about right now. Provide me the information that you're talking about, so I can use it to have this conversation. That is the only thing that we can do to be productive here right now, okay? So do that, and that's, that's, please. Like, the other trees, I don't know about the other trees, so, so I will ask about that as well.
That's all I want to hear.
So, so I will, I will ask about all that information, so, so like, let's just... Does anybody have anything else they wanna say about these trees?
No.
I would like us to proceed with the plan. I think we've gone through this process, we've rehashed these, these issues. Yeah, there's complications, and there's problems, and we know that there's gonna be challenges with construction. We have to get past this all and move this on to, to, to reality. The longer we have these kinds of discussions, the longer we're just gonna create animosity in the community, and I think we, we need to move on from it.
I guess that's, I mean, I, I think that is the, the challenge that comes from... Not saying that if you wanna make that call, that's great, Jay, but I'm just saying that I think that, like, if it's, if it's postponed a year, then, again, like, it's gonna be like, oh, we didn't know, and we were, like, we're somehow trying to, like, just do some sort of power play to cut the trees down. I mean, I guess that's, that's what I don't want. I mean, like, this isn't comfortable for any of us, like, we're all here because, like, we're trying to, like, do the right thing, and that's why we're here. We're not here. Yeah, great, and, and I'm happy, I wish you'd show up to more of our meetings, seriously, alright? Because there's a lot of important stuff, like Kelly said, right? There's a lot of important things that we deal with. And this is important, and I'm glad that you're here. But, my point is, is if we postpone a year, and they're gonna get cut down next November, and our first meeting in October in 2020, is it gonna be the same thing? Are we somehow not doing, that's what I want, I mean, it's a, that seems like a valid question.
So, we're, I don't know what we...
We need to move on, I think. I think that this, I think that we've, we've exhausted a lot of what we can accomplish, and we have some steps to, some steps to go forward, um, as far as, as gathering additional information and or, um, reaching out to find out what our, what our capacity is here. So, um, so I think, I think that, for tonight, we're, I think we're gonna leave it there.
You can get whatever you learned from Mike, and he can disseminate it to us.
Yeah, I'm gonna be sitting down with him next Wednesday already. Just put it on the agenda, we'll talk about it.
Right. Okay, so, we'll, we'll stay, we'll start there, we'll see what happens. So, the only remaining thing that we have on the agenda, um, is council and staff reports. So, start with, uh, start with you, Greg.
You always start with me.
Well, it's because you listed it.
I'm just kidding.
If you didn't sit on that side of the table...
The rec park is still there.
Thank you for coming, I, I mean, truly, I do appreciate concerns and interests that you raise.
Thanks, Joe.
If we don't cut the trees, we'll be heroes. Prince Charles will come see us, Bret Toonberg will come see us. We'll be heroes.
Yeah.
Let's see, rec park, let's see.
Okay, rec park is still there, fabulous.
Yeah, it's still there, um, okay, uh, new, new, new information. They're thinking about, um, renumbering the campground map.
Oh, interesting.
Which is kinda nice to make it a little bit less confusing to people who check in, because now they have two series of numbers with different letters behind them, and people get confused, so that's, that's a project, uh, um, so they're looking at doing that, and that's, uh, three hundred, I don't know how many sites they have, three hundred sites, yeah. Another issue that came up, and I didn't know about this, but it has come to their, their attention that the old lookout tower featured on the Tower Trail in Sweethearts Bluff nature area is not on city property.
What?
So, um, staff has removed signage directing people onto the Tower Trail, and will be removing the Tower Trail from the directional maps. The path is still there, but they feel it important not to direct people to that area, because it's not city property. Oh, the owners did, see, that didn't come up at the meeting, so I, I kinda figured that's what happened, but, yeah.
It's private property, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's news to us, but, uh, sure is.
Okay.
Um, parking, park and marina revenue for September was up fourteen percent. They had a good September peak, um, color, I think, helped.
Up fourteen percent from last year?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, versus two thousand eighteen.
That's great.
What else did we talk about? There was a hit and run damage to the canoe sculpture over by Boulder Park.
That's what happened to it.
I guess somebody must've hit it with a vehicle. It was repairable, and, and it is getting repaired and will be reinstalled. So I think what they're thinking about doing is maybe restricting some of the access to that area, because cars pull in there, and they kinda go around into the gravel, they're gonna move some rocks from Boulder Park.
Great.
And center them to kinda keep cars off that grass and drive it in there, so...
We're also gonna make some changes to the drainage at the end of that...
Yeah, that was talked about too, is trying to maybe get some drainage to that mud puddle that keeps hanging out there every time it rains, so, I mean, that's, uh, I guess that's, uh, about it, I mean, um... Then, let's put it, yeah. Thank you.
Alright. Your turn.
I, uh, we had an EDA meeting yesterday, um, and, oh, we had, uh, we gave a grant to a woman who is buying, uh, the old heavy-duty sewing, uh, location, actually doing the, like, window treatments. A portion of it, in Lutzen. Yep, they were, had gotten some money from the revolving loan fund, had sought twenty-five thousand dollars from the revolving loan fund, um, but instead, we did, uh, they got fifteen from the revolving loan fund, and then, we took money from the business development fund that the EDA has to help, which, there's been several things that we've done just this year, um, and offered that as a grant to help her with startup costs, because the starting out numbers were, it's pretty, pretty thin, and pretty tight, and hard to do, so, um, we thought that would be a good way to go, and she was excited, and, um... And then, we had, uh, the only other, kind of, well, exciting thing was another recipient of some of our business development funds, uh, it's the Northwoods Play School. She came in and did her final report. She was, um, Lynn's, uh, Trace, Lisa Tracy. She had, I think it was like sixteen thousand, seven fifty or something, um, part of that, uh, most of that was for build-out of fencing to, uh, they live on Seven, so to kinda make sure that the kids couldn't have a straight shot down to the road, and, um, there was some stairs on their existing, uh, stairs there that needed to be brought up to code to meet her licensure, um, and then, created a, like, a window wall downstairs, so that they kind of can just slide the doors open and have this, like, inside-outside space for the kids. And so she came, you know, with, like, it was super awesome presentation, uh, really well done with the plans as were presented to us before funding, um, and then, uh, and then pictures of what the build-out looked like.
Yeah, it's pretty incredible, nice space.
Yeah, pretty cool. Makes you wish you were four or five again. Like, pretty cool, like, pretty cool setup that she has going, and, um, and, and showed about the, the economic impact that that has. You know, there's eleven families involved there. And, you know, had a slide showing the different organizations and companies, and, you know, I think there was five entrepreneurs, um, who have their kids there of the eleven families, and it was just kind of cool to see it's connected, you know, to letting people be out and be able to go out and work and start a business or work for a business or other entity, so. That was pretty cool. That's how the meeting ended yesterday, and, yep, I chaired that about as well as I just spoke through.
Fabulous.
This.
Good job.
Everybody gets a puppy.
No.
You done?
Yeah, sure.
I'll make a short, uh, couple things. PUC meeting last week, uh, we talked about electric utility rates. Uh, we haven't set the rates yet, but we're considering a zero percent rate increase for two thousand twenty. You know, everything looks good, uh, you know, fund balances and projects and, so, that's, that's always encouraging news to, to know that we, uh, come up with, uh, with a zero percent increase. And then with, at the planning commission meeting, we also, uh, had a report from the consultant with regard to the, uh, recommendations for the zoning ordinance, and they, they gave us a list of priorities and recommendations for implementation strategies, uh, um, I don't know, have, have these been out, sent out to the council?
No, we haven't sent it around yet. I thought you probably had enough to deal with on the message agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we do want to talk about that a little bit, 'cause one of the planning commission's recommendations for the next step is that we need to get this firm back to help us take on some of these steps. They obviously don't have any budgetary authority of their own, so they're hoping the council will be supportive and keep moving forward on this. I don't have any details for you, but if, if you, all, they're shaking your heads, I'll be working with them to, uh, put together a scope work and, and price to look at for the planning commission's next meeting next month, so you'll get a chance to see that at, at your next meeting.
There, there are a lot of.
Step. You'll get to see this in probably the next week. I'd say we'll send it out, and then the scope work budget will be something for your next meeting.
Yeah, there are a lot, a lot of good ideas, uh, that came, came, uh, with their recommendations, so I think the planning commission was really pleased with that and, and felt that, you know, we needed to continue to follow up and, and work towards getting some of this stuff actually done, you know, so. That's it.
That's it? Kelly?
North Shore Management Board met last week. I have yet to make it to one. It always coincides with something, family something or other going on, so, but I see Bobby DeChamp is now attending them, um, for the county, so I might try and hook up with him a little bit and see somehow. I really would like to get to one. It just is not correlated very well with my schedule, so, that's it.
Um, last night, I attended the Violence Prevention Center's candlelight vigil, vigil. We do the, they do one of these in October every year to remember those people that have lost their lives from domestic violence, um, this, in this year. Um, it's been fourteen people in the state of Minnesota thus far, this year, um, which is a sobering thought. Uh, this past weekend also, I went to the Rural Arts and Culture Summit. Uh, as Greg Mueller commented, I spoke on a plenary panel about creative, um, people power and, um, and what cities can do to encourage, uh, creative aspects of their, of their, of their communities, and that was, that was a gift to be able to do that, but really the gift was to be able to spend time with some very, very incredible, um, people. There was a very strong native presence at this, and it was really inspiring for me to see what we can do to, um, be better partners with Grand Portage, uh, in what we do in our community, and, um, and yeah, there are a lot of things, if you, if any of you have, are curious about what I'm, you know, what all it was. There's, it was a really shattering experience in some ways and really building up in some other ways. I do believe that was the, uh, the only other meeting I had was downtown business meeting, where we talked about Highway sixty-one project and also some events coming up for the winter, so, that's all I have.
A conversation that we were considering having tonight, but we're not gonna have internally as staff, when the Highway sixty-one tree issue was asked to be put on the agenda, of course, we put it on the agenda, but we really didn't know what were the things the council wanted to talk about, what, in what way did the council want to interact with the public on the issue, and it was pretty quickly apparent to us that there was gonna be a lot of public here, and that was being messaged by a lot of other organizations, but we really didn't say anything about it, and that felt uncomfortable to us. And we, so we're thinking, what's the, what's the best way to handle that when, uh, agenda items are put on, is there some way that we can ensure some upfront discussion from the council about what is it that your intentions there, and how do we communicate that to the public, and in particular, how do we tell the public what we want their role to be in that conversation, so they don't give some false hope that we're having a public hearing when you're not, or that when you want to, that it's cleared us so we can get the word out appropriately. So this is a seed we want to plant, and, you know, not tonight to talk about, but sometime we want to see if there's a.
Well, we could go into that.
And then, uh, I'll be heading to Bloomington tomorrow for Simpa's annual meeting, where they'll be setting their rates. Great stuff. They always have good speakers to help us think about the electric industry and its future, and of course, they have a lot of changes coming up, so it's good for us to stay involved in that. Lastly, I said I'd give you an update on the Highway sixty-one stuff that came up at your last meeting. Entered into conversations with LHB, and they, they're looking at some ideas of, okay, well, if we wanted to try to save money on this line item, how would we do that? Maybe we could try this. They're gonna have to do some investigating before we even know what's feasible. And then I'm also, uh, going down to Duluth next Wednesday to meet with MinDOT, primarily to talk about what occurred at your last meeting, and to make sure that LHB and that we gather as much information from MinDOT as we can about what they know about these line items and their costs, and what they've heard from KGM. Also to talk about what's the appropriate process for us to be talking about change orders or any of these cost issues and gather some more information there. Uh, so I made that connection with Michael, and he's gonna bring in all the folks from MinDOT that he thinks are the right ones to talk to, so. I mean, I, I don't know if that's gonna bear any fruit, but I think that's the best we can do right now. So we'll keep you posted.
We're at least trying, right?
Yeah.
That's all we can do.
Anything else? We are adjourned.
I think that's a record.
That's definitely.
Almost twenty.